Martin, are we ready to go?
We are ready, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, it's six o'clock, so I will call the July eighth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll go ahead and lead this evening.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Leah, roll call, please.
Mayor Holtclaw?
Here.
Mayor Portem Vignell?
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari?
Here.
Councilmember Steckler?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Duque?
Here.
Councilmember Paddock?
Councilmember Paddock is still on vacation, and I believe as of this morning is in Croatia, so can we have a motion to excuse, please?
So move.
Second.
All who's in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, audience communication, anyone in chambers, not seeing anyone, anyone online? We're rolling right along, okay, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting that brings us to our presentations this evening. Uh, Martin, are you gonna kick this off?
I think so, I'll just say-
Kick off or kickoff?
I'll just say a few words before I bring in Director Ryan. We are excited to uh, kick off this important step in shaping the future of the city of Mill Creek. It marks a milestone as we begin the master plan process for the development of Town Center, an area with tremendous potential to enhance Mill Creek's brand and identity. This work is a key step in council's strategic plan. As you recall, it's the first of five strategic priorities advancing our twenty-four division. And I'll hand this over to Director Ryan, say a few words.
Sorry, am I getting in your way, Leah? Well, this is pulling up, um, super excited to be officially kicking this thing off. As city manager spoke, you know, this is a really important deal for the city, this is uh, a tremendous opportunity and pivot point for us as we chart a bold and vibrant future and kind of pivot towards the future. Um, I'm joined here today by our, our, uh, our peers that, uh, Mitch and Jeff from GGLO. I'll be happy to invite them up shortly, I just wanted to say, you know, again, we're super excited to start this process. And um, we've already initiated several elements of this, this is the formal first kickoff with y'all. But in truth, um, by this point now, I've, me or myself or Justin has spoken with Arts and Beautification Board, Parks and Rec Board, Youth and Advisory Council, Planning Commission Design Review Board. We've already started to hit the uh, community volunteer boards, starting to work on getting make sure we have strong community input. And uh, we're also fixing to be at the Mill Creek Festival. Um, on Saturday and Sunday, we'll have a tent there preaching a good word and getting excitement and doing community outreach there as well. And um, throughout this process, you'll see us a lot out there in the community trying to make sure this is really a community-driven process. Without further ado, I'll invite Mitch and Jeff up here uh, to um, introduce the project and introduce themselves to y'all, thank you.
Right here. Okay, good evening, thanks for having us this evening. We're just gonna introduce you tonight uh, to our team, we didn't bring the whole traveling squad. Might not all fit on the seats. Give a brief overview of the project, go through the timeline, um, and then invite any discussion uh, at, at this early point in the process.
Gotta use theirs, right? Okay, Mitch, Butler, Jeff. Eric, he should.
It should.
Should.
Yeah.
Not, I think this stuff.
There we go.
You can just scroll.
Okay.
Okay.
Scroll away. Uh, my name's Jeff Foster, I'm a principal and a member of TGLO. Uh, we do lots of architecture, interiors, planning, uh, and landscape architecture. My colleague Mitch Tatchek and I here have worked together for many years on a variety of different planning pro- projects. And my other colleague Marie Lacasse, who's a landscape architect, is an integral part of our team, not here tonight, uh, but she will be, yeah, very involved in the project. Uh, we've been around since nineteen eighty-six, uh, an integrated firm, I mentioned some of the other services that we provide with a presence in Seattle is where most of our firm is, a small office in Boise and a small presence in Los Angeles. We've always been rooted here in the Pacific Northwest, and our specialty has always been uh, multifamily mixed-use development at all scales, everything from townhouses to high-rises. Next slide. It's finicky. There we go. Um, some things that y'all might be familiar with at scale are the Yessler Terrace redevelopment for Seattle Housing Authority in the city of Seattle. Thirty-acre site entitled for up to five thousand homes in a variety of different buildings, uh, million square feet of um, commercial and retail development. We thought it would take twenty years to get done, and uh, here it is fifteen years after we started and it's almost complete. Kind of a new front door for the city, the Heights District in Vancouver, maybe a scale that's a little more germane to Mill Creek uh, with mid-rise development, um, and uh, ground-related development. Uh, Port Orchard Subarea Plan, I don't know if y'all ever get over to Port Orchard. But I think in many ways a similar community uh, to Mill Creek. Not as far along the, the development timeline as y'all are. But we created a subarea plan for them, and the purpose of that subarea plan uh, was to enable the city to move forward to seek funding for redevelopment along its waterfront and the main drag through town, uh, which is also a state highway. Um, so a complete rezone of that area, um, and things are proceeding there. Um, and last but not least, the North Gate redevelopment, I'm sure you all have driven by at some point. Uh, very proud of that, with the incorporation of the NHL practice facility and uh, ongoing development of housing and retail development in that area. There we go, uh, our other team members, um, I, I won't give you anybody's life story, because you know, we only have a limited amount of time. But all of these folks uh, from KPFF, ten W, PRR, uh, EA, and uh, part that we have worked with literally for decades. And the individuals that are part of our team are those people, it's not, oh, this company we did a project with twenty years ago. And you know, if they seemed appropriate, so we invited them, no, we, we really have done a lot of the work that I talked about in the last few minutes together, um, and continue to do so. So, very excited to be working together again here uh, in Mill Creek. And I will let Mitch do the project over.
Thank you, Jeff, and enough about us, because that's really why we're not here. Uh, but really just wanted to give you a brief overview of uh, the project as, as Ryan had, uh, excuse me, as, as I'm getting the two Jeffs as we work on the project figured out. As uh, Jeff Ryan had mentioned, um, we're really just getting into the start of the project here with our analysis. And I will walk through though, uh, really the highlights and the, the major phases coming forward. So um, looking at the project site here, um, identified as a strategic urban center and a recent comp plan adopted end of last year. Um, while it's home to numerous existing businesses, um, has potential uh, to really be a significant economic driver uh, with the right public policies and investments that can be a catalyst uh, for that future uh, public sector, private sector investment. Uh, initial project goals, um, for the subarea plan, really extending the, and enhancing the great town center that already exists just to the north of us. Um, and extending that walkability in the pedestrian realm, um, further to the south. And extending, um, really, we've heard a lot about the issues from the past planning efforts with vehicle cut-throughs and really, how do we improve both the streetscape, um, but also, um, encourage that more pedestrian-focused redevelopment. Um, and then aligning growth and infrastructure, um, mobility and sustainability investments, um, to encourage that private sector development. Slides go, uh, looking at the master plan goals, um, one key aspect that's different from the previous subarea planning is looking um, beyond really that uh, policy level, but really getting into a vision of what it could be and what the site could be at in getting down into a more finer-grain uh, uh, development scenarios. Uh, efforts will be looking to work with the city and community members to develop that master plan. Um, that again will um, protect, hopefully, uh, spur private sector development. A little bit more on uh, the scope and process, so our scope broken into three pri- primary phases. Uh, right now, we're in the analysis and visioning phase, really, we're here and that's why we're here tonight is to continue to learn as much as we can about uh, the city of Mill, Mill Creek, as well as your vision and ideas uh, for the site. Uh, we'll then be moving into the di- design exploration phase, uh, really testing out uh, ideas that we've gathered. Um, before eventually the documentation and adoption phase. Each of these phases will include the six uh, subcategories you see along, along the right here. Um, and then the graphic you see on the left here is really looking at how we're, uh, how we look to uh, really dissect every neighborhood and every project site we work with, and looking at what are the, the various layers that really make up um, the urban design framework from pedestrian to vehicle circulation, building form and scale uses, um, the public realm elements uh, that all integrate to create a great place. Uh, project timeline, so we kicked off um, in May here. As I noted, we're working through our analysis and visioning, that'll carry us into uh, through July and into early August before we uh, work on the design exploration, uh, testing out scenarios, at that point, we'll also have our uh, EIS scoping meeting. Planned uh, right now at the beginning, in early September. Um, and then in November, uh, will be our meeting to really look at the alternatives that then will be uh, reviewing as part of the planned action EIS process. Uh, that will then also kick off the uh, comment, public comment period for the EIS that then we will uh, review in more detail uh, with you all uh, in the new year, as we work through the adoption process. Again, looking at the six categories I looked at previously and, and how they work into each of the three phases. Uh, public outreach and engagement, uh, inter-dispersed without, throughout each phase, as, as Jeff had mentioned, we're really excited um, to be part of the Mill Creek Festival this weekend, and really just get people excited about what is the, the future vision of this area that is so vital uh, to grow, future growth targets for your community. Um, looking again, the urban design uh, aspects, um, and that urban design framework, environmental impact uh, both through the EIS process and, and looking at, um, uh, stormwater and impacts and mitigation as it relates to the adjacent wetlands to the site. Um, and that goes into the infrastructure, the economic and business and market viability, as well as all feeding into the planned action ordinance. Um, again, the goal here is to create a vision for the site that is uh, community-driven and and then that creates a catalyst for future development. That, thank you, and-
We, we came in to, to talk to your team, um, initially. One of the things that we thought was, was so appealing about Mill Creek that we don't always see is y'all already have a lot of there, there, or here. And oftentimes, we're faced with trying to create a reason for people to want to come to a particular place. Y'all have been really successful in the past, and that's, you know, it sounds like a, a platitude to say we're excited about this, but legitimately. There's a lot here that's really great, you know, y'all have, have done wonderful things in your city. Uh, and our goal is to build on that and, and take it to the next level.
Any questions? Councilmember Cavallari?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, hey guys, nice to meet you, thank you for the presentation. How familiar are you with the council and perhaps their, their apprehensions regarding um, just massive amounts of apartments and that being the key driver down in Town Center? And, and, and are you cognizant that the vision is to just be an extension of Town Center that already exists here, is that, is that going into the planning of uh, of what we're about to do down here?
I think your team, uh, the planning team has alluded to some of that, um, with us in our initial discussions about scoping and talking about vision for the place. We don't come into a project with, okay, here's the one-size-fits-all solution. Uh, we do, we're legitimate and, and genuine in saying we wanna listen to the community about what's important to you, but I do think housing is a significant component of whatever the future development would be, um, here in, in Mill Creek.
And, and I don't disagree, but some of the examples you have, like, let's say, North Gate, Yessler Terrace, I, I, some of those are, are um, are more of a uh, government subsidized housing, some of those, and, and, and more of a, I don't wanna say lower end, it's a poor choice of words, but, but we have a brand that we're trying to protect here as well, so I, I think that goes a long way into, into the, or it should go into the planning, and so that's, that's just one of my concerns, I wanna get out there as we kick off the process, so to speak.
Appreciate you sharing that.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Steckler?
I'm gonna kind of dovetail on that, because um, uh, great presentation, by the way, we are extremely excited about this and um, just think it's gonna actually be a, a real benefit to us long-term, this is a-
Yeah.
Something very significant for, for the future. Some of the things that we talked about in council meetings, some of our concerns of more apartments, more apartments, and more apartments. We really, and I don't know if you can help us with this, or if you're planning on helping us with this, but uh, we have expressed, we, I have expressed, and some of the people agree with me, but I'm trying to say this in the feeling of the council, the need for condominiums as opposed to apartments, high-end condominiums. A great example was the, the high-end condominiums that were built behind the section of, uh, Town Center, you know, that sold out, you know, I think probably have seen them, and they're, uh, it's really hard to buy one because they pop so quick, they're very sought after. But, you know, it, we've also been instructed that you can't really tell developers what to build, whether there be apartments or condos, but we don't really want apartments. We want high-end condos, we think that's going to benefit young families starting out, or young couples, probably more couples than families, starting out and being homeowners, as well as really taking care of our, uh, we have a, a significant elderly population. Don't just look at me, but there's a lot like me. But uh, they're, they're targeted downsized, and uh, the homes that we do have, a lot of our homes are quite large, and a chance to move into a lot, uh, uh, I could see us using this as an opportunity to open up more housing in our, our single uh, family uh, uh, zoned areas, so can you help us with that, are you planning on that, have you been instructed on this, have you, I'm, I doubt this is the first time you've heard that. Sure, um, our team has probably told you about this.
We're, we're early into working with um, everybody here, um, so we haven't explored that a lot, and I'm glad you brought up housing for a senior population. By the way, I have received my art pla- applications too, and I get a discount at Denny's now.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm in there.
That happened to me quite a while ago, but I remember as well, yeah.
The challenge with, with condominiums. Frankly, and this is my opinion, you could talk with, with others here or your city attorney. With the way the laws in the state of Washington are for liability associated with condominiums, single-family or single, like, you, you maybe you would think of them as townhouses or duplexes or attached, that, that you can work, because you're, you're pretty fee-centered. When you get into um, mid-rise wood-framed apartment buildings, the liability associated with that is um, just, uh, what's the right word?
It's significant.
It's, it's like a lightning rod that nobody wants to touch, and so the leap then is to go to a type-one building. Um, you know, concrete, steel, in more high-rises, and that's just, I, that's not for here. So if it was condominiums, it probably would be what I would refer to as ground-related buildings. Um, anyway, do you, anything to add to that?
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that, and frankly, it's, it's something that is, comes up on most of our projects and something we've pushed and pushed and tried to get and completely agree with the sentiment and, and, and frankly, you know, the way you build wealth in, in our country, whether you like it or not, i- is through homeownership. And, and the way that you keep people living in your community as they retire and want to downsize is to be able to stay within homeownership through condos. And I think, you know, um, the initial thoughts on that is, you know, how can you set up policies that encourage condo development in hopes that, you know, state laws will change within the development timeframe of, of this project, you know, um, but yeah.
I think Jeff has something to add.
If I could interject too, one thing that's also important is, at the beginning of this process is we're just kind of being like sponges and taking on all kinds of ideas and stuff like that. However, that being said, one thing that, uh, one reason why we really went, felt really excited about going with GGLO and something that's been kind of reiterated throughout this process is, regardless of what type of housing product is developed, we're going to ensure that it's right-sized for Mill Creek and that it has appropriate design guidelines to make sure that it maintains the outs, the commitment to outstanding urban design and placemaking that the city of Mill Creek has become famous for. So that's just something to keep in mind, that as we talk about these big ideas, the bedrock principles by which this whole thing is based on is make sure it looks nice, make sure it's nice to walk around, and make sure that it's great for seniors, for kids, for people to walk, um, for everyone of all ages to be able to walk, roll, and enjoy.
So rather than focusing on condo versus apartment, let's focus on design standards that will meet the needs of that market we think condo owners are looking for.
We, in fairness, we, we have done lots and lots of affordable housing for low-income individuals. We've also done lots and lots of highly unaffordable housing, um, for, for market-rate clients. And the, the fact of the matter is, the solution to the housing issues that we have, um, everywhere is more housing. And all housing is affordable to somebody at some level. Some of those examples that we cited are mixed-income communities, and they're very well-managed. Frankly, it's more expensive to build affordable house, market rate house.
Really? Why is that, why is that?
Because it's so mission-driven. In addition, when a market-rate developer builds a project, um, they are, uh, building, uh, to respond to the market. When an affordable developer builds, they have to do that, and then they have to comply with uh, labor, uh, organized labor and wage rates. They frequently have sustainable design uh, requirements that come with the twenty sources of capital in the project. They have whatever other, uh, mission-driven, and I'm not saying any of these, these things are bad. Uh, they have for local or state municipalities. And those things, well, again, none of them are necessarily bad, they add costs, so affordable housing is oftentimes twenty percent higher to build than market.
Uh, just to add on to that, um, just based on my experience in working in the housing market and housing space in California, the average cost of an affordable housing development in Southern California was about six hundred, six hundred fifty thousand dollars per door. And the average cost for a market-rate unit was like five hundred. It is just as, actually as, um, Jeff stated, it's actually more cost-effective to uh, build market rate than it is to build affordable.
You know, one thing, I'm sorry, is it Mitch?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mitch. Mitch said that I, it really hit home with me, it was when he said, let's make sure we're building housing that meets the needs of the community, our need, our community, of Mill Creek, not just housing that's, you know, we know we need more homes. But what does Mill Creek need, uh, and, you know, what kind of homes? And that's the point I wanna see people like you, working with our partners, understanding that we're, we're, we need to not just build homes, we need to build homes that work for Mill Creek and Mill Creek residents, and, you know, let's give our seniors a chance to downsize here, because they can't. Um, they, they move on, they go somewhere else, and they don't really want to, but let's, let's, let's keep them in our community, I mean, cradle to grave, what a great, what a great concept to think about with a, with a, uh, a, a, a city that it can take you from once that young couple to, you know, that's still lovely, but senior couple. Um, I think it's a great concept. So I, I like, it stuck with me when you said that, let's, let's, let's meet, let's build houses for the needs of the community. We need those condos or something like that, we need that, nobody's gonna deny that here.
Mayor Portem?
Thank you, Mayor, um, thank you for your presentation, it's really nice to meet both of you. And um, I am really excited to get this off and running, and we, um, the majority of the council had went on a tour, as you've probably been told, of um, Woodenville and Bothell and um, Henmore. Um, and so I, as we had that tour, it really became apparent to us how important it is to make sure that we do have um, some kind of study where we can figure out what design standards we need, um, in which areas we need those design standards and how to face things. So I think, um, the work that you're doing is going to help us determine that overall piece. And so I'm really excited about it, and I'm also very um, glad to see that you're doing so much outreach and that you're gonna be at the um, festival this weekend, talking to the residents to find out what they want and what they're, they're looking for so that we can make sure that this project is something that they're excited about and um, dovetails into the things that they need, and they're hoping that we have. So thank you um, for your presentation, and um, I'm looking forward to seeing what, what we come up with, and um, hopefully, we come up with something too that, um, does something nice with the pond, I'm really excited about doing something with the pond, so, thank you.
Councilmember Duque?
Hello, thank you so much, I, I greatly appreciate the presentation, I've been looking forward to this. So um, we, recently, I attended a, um, a Mill Creek Chamber of Commerce, and where we did a very brief introduction into what this, um, this area, and just kind of, you know, starting those open communications, just like you guys are doing, um, and we didn't have the expert that is uh, Jeff Ryan, uh, to talk about it, but that's coming, with him, but I did wanna provide just a little bit of feedback that we heard just from that initial conversation. There's a little, definitely concern about parking. Business owners know that that's it, so there, there's some, you know, not, this is not a surprise, you will know, but I just wanted to reiterate, because that was part of, um, the questions that we received, and, and Mayor Portem Vignell was there, so she'll definitely, um, can collaborate if I'm missing anything else, but parking was that issue, and just the density already, a lot of business owners, um, uh, that were there, because they were all shaking their head in, in agreement with what was talking about, it's just, it already feels really full um, in this area already. So while a lot, I wanna be very clear, because many, um, there's a whole real estate row, as we call them, real-to-row of who attend these meetings and things like that, all are very, um, understanding, want more additional housing, understand growth, like, very supportive of all of that, but there's just already this feeling of it being very full in this area, and so there's something to, um, for consideration of looking into whatever that might be as you're going through the process, but just knowing that's the, the like, initial kind of feedback or awareness about what, um, uh, um, what it might be, and this is again, a, a group of people that are generally very pro, obviously, business or community growth specifically, um, so uh, that, that, you know, they're not coming from in any other, any other way there versus maybe other community groups would. And then I did have a question for you, um, in, in terms of, and you, I think you mentioned something about private sector interest, and so that's where this had me kind of thinking, um, how many of the things that you've worked on, or not many, not how many, sorry, if you have any examples that you can share later, um, and not now, um, uh, about these subarea plans like ours, where we don't own the majority of the land? You know, I, I'm, I'm, so my, like, the question I wrote while you were speaking was, how many are like our site, where we don't own land? What's that private sector interest, what, how can we, you know, kind of control, because we really just own this area, and as we did the tour that uh, Mayor Portem, um, Vignell shared, a lot of them did own the land, so they could make those decisions. So I guess that, yeah, not now, and on this experience, you gave us a couple of highlighting of what they are, I don't actually know the funding or how those specific case studies, um, that you shared with us are, but I think that would be helpful either through the process or an email of like, uh, something on your website that might, or something that we could look towards, um, that had that same kind of structure that we're having.
Yeah, um, so, couple of subarea plans that, that Jeff had mentioned, uh, so are very different, so the Heights, um, down in Vancouver, Washington, um, that was centered along a um, parcel of land that was pub- publicly owned. And it was creating a redevelopment plan and then going out to, um, solicit private developers, uh, to start the development. Um, contrasting that, the subarea plan we finished on, uh, more recently in Port Orchard, um, was almost entirely publicly or privately owned.
Okay.
Um, and so it was really working with, um, private law, landowners, and what are the barriers to reinvestment in the property? And um, so through that process, um, you know, it was working on what are the, the land use constraints? What's the vision, and that was a big aspect, is really creating a vision and excitement, um, to where they're at now, one of the items was, um, a new community center and public library and waterfront, which was a, 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 a public investment. Um, that eventually got excitement and became the first catalyst, catalytic project, that'll be the first one built. Um, it got, um, funding from, uh, the Kitsap, uh, Public- Um it got um funding from uh the Kitsap uh Public uh Facilities District. As along with some private investment and then along with new um. Open space investments from the city as well as new streetscape work. So there was some public investment. On the public land there, but then um in concert with that Kitsap Bank is committed to build a new forty five million dollar. Uh new office headquarters adjacent to that, that looks out on that same public plaza space. And so it's really using that. That investment there and now there's been uh three new uh multifamily projects in the pipeline. Um around that same area. And so i- it's a combination of of both, but yes, in that case, the city did not own. There they own very little of of the the property within the the sub area.
Go ahead, Jeff.
And if I could add on, um just to bring it more locally, um and correct me if I'm wrong, our uh in-house historian. The the original town center is also was developed in under similar circumstances. We own. Exactly one parcel, I believe, in that area. And the rest of it was privately owned and operated when that was developed as well. So. There is um this process of redeveloping in sub area and developing a sub area plan. An area that's principally primary principally owned by private ownership is actually usually the norm and um. The town center, what just here is a great example of it.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. It just, you know, since it was for, you know.
At some of the other stuff we've done. Your question was specifically other examples and I think you asked us not to say what they all were.
But I mean, you can't, but I I didn't want to, you know.
I think of like Sandpoint, Idaho, what what we did over there. And some of some of the other private. So anyway, we'll we'll look into that and maybe we give you some other.
I'll say the majority is actually. And it's creating those conditions to then, you know, with um the right public policies and and then targeted public investments that then. Encourage those private investments.
I really appreciate that. Thank you and for the explanation because I I knew that. I think because of our tour, if I can just share. There was a, I still have like, one of the little concerns I had was in Kenmore, wonderful city that I got to explore the first time on that. On that tour was they were very excited and they really forward thinking about like how they were gonna make these partnerships happen and how this was gonna look. But then there's that strip mall that just won't sell and is not interested and it is right there. And I I uh I'm I'm always interested when I see like big buildings and that like little house that will, you know, give out. Usually for that little house and and um so that's what I keep thinking about is that because we don't own all this. And because it's not trees or or um nature, that was where the town center is, I'm concerned about what. I I'm I'm not concerned, isn't the right word. I'm curious about what this process will look like. Um and that's why I was wondering, because I think there's some case studies or examples of something like that and how we can then. Because I don't want us to reinvent the wheel. I want us to like, what are the lessons learned that we can learn from these places? So we can figure out those next steps. And I'm sure you guys are thinking about it, but I wanted to um flag that as one of my.
I do think it's safe to say no project we've we've ever done at scale, you know, that's that's several acres. In the end, ever ends up looking like the rendering for the vision.
Absolutely, that's always.
You know, businesses move in, businesses fail. Others replace them. Uh maybe a housing project doesn't get built here, it gets built over there. We try to build in um predictability and that's the policy side that Jeff was talking about and Minch mentioned. But also the flexibility for there to have different things happen. Like, you know, I gotta think this is a twenty plus year. Uh transformation, evolution, or maybe evolution is a better word. Who knows, you know, some other things might happen.
Personally, that's that's interesting dynamic of urban spaces. Is is that it it it's not a clean slate where you build everything at once and and it has this sterile feel to it. Is you have that interesting dynamic of 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 development over time.
Yeah, there's that happy accident of time. We worked on U Village for like twenty some years. We haven't done anything there in quite a while, but. When that started, it was, hey, let's let's turn the Lamonts into a bookstore and a gap, right? Now, and I mean, it was just massive field of surface parking. And now people go there and park in the garage and hang out for the whole day and it's totally different, right? And that, that's thirty thirty five years worth of transformation.
Thank you.
Hundred percent retail there too.
Well, I'll wrap things up by thanking you for the presentation. I'm excited to be kicking this off. Unfortunately, unless you get your work done in the next one hundred and seventy six days, I won't be here to see the conclusion. I should still be alive, but I will not be sitting up here to see the conclusion. You know, I guess just a couple of quick comments. Um I think one of the big challenges we have is everyone up here is well intentioned, but. We have a tendency to dive into the weeds too quick. And I hope that the council gives these consultants and their team the opportunity to listen to you. Listen to the public and come back with some ideas. Don't just nitpick based on the speculative. Let's wait, let them get to the point where they can come up with some concepts where I think you can have a much more reasoned decision. On the density comment, I think everyone needs to remember, this is the challenge with land use. So I wish anyone that had the concerns about density was in this room during all our public hearings when we were talking about putting the density in the South Town Center. And just like the tax issue, when we heard no one opposing the tax increase. No one argued against putting the density in the South Town Center, not one person. So that is bait. We've our direction, the majority of the council is given by our comprehensive plan. Is to put the density in the South Town Center. So this process is to figure out what's the best way to do that consistent with all the. Concepts we just talked about, protecting our community, our identity, make it part of the community. And then the final challenge is the parking. I think you guys are gonna need to do some education with the council because. There's people are set in their ways. We gotta have parking, but more and more jurisdictions are eliminating parking requirements. It's happening in Washington, it's happening around the country and the world is not falling apart. And that is especially why we looked at that for this area where we got the green line, the orange line, and someday in the next century, the light rail coming. Uh up north past Linwood. Um so don't just assume that this is gonna be a massive failure if we don't have. Massive parking, because if we have massive massive parking, it'll never happen because it'll be too expensive. Because you're gonna have to dig down below ground to find all that parking and that just isn't gonna pencil. And the final comment on the cost, keep in mind, we're not gonna get the type of housing everyone's afraid of. Just because of the economics of what the land's gonna cost for someone to come in here. And do the type of development that I think you guys are gonna end up with in this master plan at the end of the end of the day. So. I will be following this process next year, possibly from afar, possibly from near, I don't know. But uh thank you. I look forward to seeing where this goes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
Okay, we have no old business tonight. Brings us to our first of three items of new business. The first is a resolution related to the award of the twenty twenty six pavement uh pavement preservation design contract. Mr. Bean.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council and Jeff. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about the twenty twenty six pavement preservation. The pavement preservation is a program that um is to maintain. The city streets, making them from good to excellent, using and and um. Optimizing the budget that's provided to match the right treatment with the the road itself. We do this by the roadway condition. We do this with the pavement condition in index. Which is a method of analyzing the roadway surface and prism, which is the subgrade. To determine its expected life and various types of treatment for that. You'll see that um when a roadway is above eighty five, it's considered excellent and not to do anything. When it's seventy to eighty four, it's preventative maintenance. This year, we've been looking at. Optimizing uh. An area of town to add some efficiency to construction and construction management. Using the data from the twenty twenty four uh pavement assessment. We found a group of streets in the north end of town that range between seventy and seventy eight. Uh which allow for um a a treatment that fits within our budget. Uh we selected roads uh. With that PCI, sorry. These roads are have slight moderate distress, no rutting, generally just narrow cracks. We've selected a designer that we'll go out with and we'll walk these, just because the PCI says it's seventy to seventy eight, we really still need to walk the streets. To make sure that we're matching the right treatment with that street and we'll do that with the designer. There's two type of treatments that go with the that the PCI range that we're looking at. And that would be slurry seal or a resurfacing, a grind and overlay. And any street that has a grind and overlay will also be evaluated for their curb ramps to make sure that they meet ADA compliance. The slurry seal is a very economical maintenance tool to extend the pavement life. It's applied. To it's applied over the the asphalt, which is the structural part of the roadway. To extend the life and add a new wearing course to it. It prevents water, it re-oils the top part of the asphalt road. And it also provides a protective water sealant layer to extend the life of the of the pavement itself. When a road needs to be overlaid, that is, that demands a lot more work. You need to. Uh grind out the old pavement, one to three inches and then repave over the top of that. And that's ten times, up to ten times more. Than the maintenance uh work of a slurry seal. In twenty twenty, in April of this year, we uh put out a request for qualifications. And review the responses and identify Gray and Osborne as having the qualifications to perform the services needed. We entered into a good faith negotiation on scope and fee. And this is the an image uh that we have right now of the streets that were selected for twenty twenty six. The existing budget for the program this year is two point five three eight, two point five million. Uh our original estimate at the beginning of the year was one point eight, but once you add in design and C M work, it puts us up about. Two point three ish, two point four, so this will match the budget. Uh we shifted some of the monies that were for twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six, so we could finish up the work that we started in twenty twenty four. Gray and Osborne, their consultant fees will be two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy six thousand five hundred dollars. To bring us through full contract uh bid documents. Plans, specifications and estimate, as well as the investigation of the roadway and the ADA compliance. Our milestone schedule is as follows. Today, we're at phase three when uh we meet on July eighth. If things go as planned, we can give notice to proceed to the designer on the fourteenth. We'll get our thirty percent and ninety percent later on this fall, early winter. And then we'll issue, we'll advertise in January, so we can be ready to go when paving season starts in April. We'll work through that and then we'll be done with construction in October. There's always a delay for striping. You have to wait twenty one days after you do any sort of paving to stripe and then finish up. Late finish would be. Um November of this year. Do you have any questions?
No questions, but two comments. I mean, I support this contract. But I think it's important as we go forward and less with the design, but when we get into construction, the. Public needs to understand why we do this from a cost perspective. You know, just saying it's ten times more expensive, I think we really need to show them dollars. We don't have enough tax dollars to pay to repave all these roads. That's the simple reality unless the majority of the council wants to dramatically increase property taxes. At the same time, we've got a problem. We have a bad track record. That track record goes back ten years. We. Heard it when we didn't get around to it, when we tried the chip seal in Wildflower and up in Silver uh Heatherwood West area. That wasn't us, it was the county, I believe, did that work and they did a piss poor job, bar in the language. And we unfortunately had the same experience in. In not Wildflower, that was Chip Seal, that was one I already mentioned, but this latest community last year where we tried the Slurry Seal. Slurry Seal works. I mean, it's used extensively in other jurisdictions. But we've lost the public's faith in us because the contractors we've hired to do the work, it hasn't worked out. So we've got to find a way to. Rebuild that trust because in unless people are gonna vote to raise taxes through the roof. Uh this is our option going forward. It's simply not economic reality to think we're gonna repave all these roads inside neighborhoods, so.
You know, we we did hear that and we went back and put together lessons learned and took a lot of. Self-reflection on what happened and why it happened and we've made some changes uh to our process. One. We're working harder to get our contract out sooner so we can advertise early. Second, we're updated our special provisions, our contract specs to better match the Mill Creek condition. You know, we slurry sealed in September. Getting a little bit cooler. We have a lot of uh tree canopy. And it also rained on Friday the thirteenth, but that that really inhibited the curing process for the slurry itself. And so they are coming back at their expense to re-slurry the streets.
This wasn't a knock on staff. This was the the purpose of my comment was the, that's the public's perception. And I appreciate all that you guys have done to figure out what went wrong and what can be done better. That's great and it's, we appreciate that. But the perception is. We don't know what we're doing. So somehow we've got to rebuild that trust. That was my point. I wasn't trying to be critical of staff in any way. Um so.
And and so that we we know the process works and to your point, it's just a climate control issue. When the slurry is applied, correct?
Right. The the book says anytime over fifty degrees and rising, it's fine. But you know, our experience with that wasn't true. So our specs are gonna read from July fifth. Through August thirtieth, because that's the best time we're gonna get consistently dry streets and an ambient temperature that's. Over sixty degrees to begin with.
Councilmember Steckler, I'm sorry, were you done, Councilmember Kevlar? Oh, did you have a response? Okay, Councilmember Steckler.
I've said a couple, couple of questions. Um first of all, the two and a half million, um how much of that is is via grant? How much of that is city supported?
It's my understanding that's all REIT.
All REIT, okay. Good, good, okay. Um because I know there are safe street monies out there. I was just wondering if we had applied for those.
Different project.
Different project where you, we are going up to safe street but for a different project. Got it, alright. Uh I also had, oh, one one last question. And we don't know anything about really, maybe the mayor does, but uh slurry seal versus asphalt. Not a real expert. Are there any other alternatives that you could have looked at besides slurry and asphalt?
Yeah, there's a chip seal.
Any other alternatives besides chip seal?
Let me give you a quick breakdown. Let's see if I can go back to this first page here. So when we're at the high end of this, around eighty five ish, we can apply a fog seal. And a fog seal, we're, what we really wanna do is we wanna reapply oil to the to the. Asphalt and the gravel that's there, so it'll bind and it won't break up and it won't allow water to go through. Because during the winter, the water goes in and frees thaws and that's what breaks up your pavement with your garbage trucks. They also beat the road up pretty good. And so fog seal and then a a slurry seal and then a chip seal are the standard practices. And then after those have expired, as we're getting closer to the end of the service life of the road, which would be twenty years, twenty five years. Then we actually have to go in and rebuild the sub base and just rebuild the road. But these preventative measures, they just delay the big cost down the road. We're just taking care of it.
So we're looking at, slurry seal is gonna give us what, five to eight years, right?
Five, eight years.
Okay, five to eight years. Um and then we're gonna be looking at probably having to rebuild the roads.
So as we get towards that five or eight years, there could be, we could do a fog seal. And that may, that may take care of it and bring it back up to a hundred. What we're trying to do is take our eighty four and bring it up to a hundred. We're adding a new. We're adding a new surface on there. As that starts to wear, we can add a, a minor treatment to keep that going. And then there's, uh, crack sealing, which will also, is also a, a, uh, maintenance measure that we could use. And all we're doing is we're delaying the rebuild. We're doing minor maintenance now, so we don't have to rebuild for many years.
So the, the fog seal you can't do now, given the condition of these roads.
Correct.
But if you put the slurry seal on it in five to eight years, you'd still be able to put a fog seal over there?
I'd say three years, three, about three years, five years and a fog seal would be appropriate.
And how long does that last?
Um, I've never, I don't know. I would say that that gives us another three to five years.
Three to five. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, it all depends on the, the abuse the road takes, like our garbage trucks and the Amazon trucks. They're the biggest culprit to roadway damage.
Mira, go ahead and make a motion.
Hold on one second, Director Todd has a comment.
Robert mentioned it, but one of the things that you've probably seen, you've seen a big time on Trillium, but think about Philly Green Drive. Our crew has taken on crack sealing, crack filling in a big way the last couple of years with a bigger crew and more expertise. That does a lot for keeping that, those first cracks from forming, like Robert said. Trillium got to the point where there's so much alligatoring that it's just putting it off for a couple of years until we get that one done. But Valley Green Drive is a good example of, right now, look at one side, they were able to do one side last year, could do the other side this year. But look at the contrast, one side, there's a bunch of snakes of, of crack sealant and the other side, there isn't. But I think that's the kind of thing, we're going to get a couple more years out of that for sure by crack sealing ahead of these other things getting to a, to a worse spot.
Other questions? Any motions?
Mira, um, make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a professional services agreement. With Graham Osborne Inc. not to exceed two hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars, inclusive of all taxes.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much.
And that brings us to item E, resolution to award a contract for stormwater pipe, pipe rehabilitation work, eighteen inches and above project. Ms. Sultani.
Hello, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, thank you for opportunity. Um, here, today I wanna request authorization for the professional service agreement for design of the stormwater work plan, eighteen inches and above project. Here's a table of contents. I will talk about background of the project, then I will go through scope, advertisement, project expenses and funds, questions, and proposed motion. So part of the city's ongoing effort for, to inspect and maintain stormwater infrastructure, uh, is to CCTV the projects, CCTV the pipes and clean them. And these inspections focus on, this project inspections focus on pipe eighteen inches and larger. Which using CCTV technology for condition assessments. City GAS shows approximately eighty thousand linear feet of stormwater, stormpipe, eighteen inch and larger. This project has designed to detect deterioration, early helping to prevent failures and minimize replacement rehabilitation costs. Which this will support a proactive assessed management approach and promotes long-term system reliability. This program has been completed between twenty twelve to twenty seventeen, so updated information is necessary. Um, so approximately twenty-four thousand linear feet of stormwater pipes, eighteen inches and larger, will be cleaned and inspected using CCTV in twenty twenty-five. So what a pipe rehabilitation work plan update will be developed. So this loop, this report will identify as recommend, recommended repairs, replacement and maintenance activities for the next five years. This project has been advertised on March eleven and one statement of qualifications received. Osborne Consult, on Consulting Inc. selected as the preferred consulting. They qualification and propose a schedule aligned with the city's goal and project timeline. The twenty twenty-five, twenty, twenty, so, the contract amount for this project is four hundred twelve thousand seven hundred sixteen dollar. The twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget initially included a one hundred thousand placeholder in fund for one to restart the annual inspection. It is now proposed to allocate five hundred thousand for the first year from surface water utility fees to support the program. Staff recommends deferring the Nickel, Nickel Creek Old Seattle Road Fish Passage project. With a current four hundred thousand appropriation from twenty twenty-six to twenty-seven to help cover that shortfall. And orders to amend the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty capital improvement plan will be brought to council at a future date to reflect the updated project timing and cost. Thank you for the opportunity, please let me know if you have any questions.
Councilmember Kevler?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, I see that you want to defer the Nickel Creek Fish Passage project. Are we under any time constraints? Are we under the gun for anything to have that project completed?
No, there's no.
Okay.
Councilor Allison?
Thank you for the presentation. So, um, you, you said that we have approximately eighty thousand linear feet of pipes, eighteen inches and larger. And this will only be assessing a quarter of that, twenty-four thousand, right? So is this the section that was maybe not looked at since twenty twelve? How, how are you determining what twenty-four thousand linear feet you're going to look at first?
So this, this like, this process to CCTV and inspect the pipes is supposed to happen every five or ten years for the city. So we have done it between twenty ten, twelve to twenty seventeen and now is the new process. And we're going to do this every year for the like next two or four years to make sure that we cover all the eighteen inch and larger pipes. And then we'll look at the smaller pipes as well, to make sure we look at everything. And then we'll have a plan to go and just actually repair them, the pipes that needs to be aligned, replaced, repaired. And then we will do that, this process again, I mean, five or ten years from now. The way that we, uh, will decide on the pipe, we'll look at the pipes that, the basins that have more flooding issues might maybe, or the pipes that we haven't looked at for a very long time. And then we'll go forward to look eventually at all the pipes.
Thank you.
Councilor Steckler?
Since the point of clarification, that the five hundred thousand, the total cost, that's just for the inspection of the pipes or inspection and repair of the pipes and projected repair?
Inspection CCTV and producing the report.
Okay, so no repairs?
No repairs.
Wow. Okay.
Any other questions? Any motions?
Mira, I'll make a motion. Move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Osborne Consulting Inc. For an amount not to exceed four hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion passes six zero. That brings us to new business item F, resolution related to award of Silvercrest Drive reconstruction design contract. Ms. Sultani?
Thank you again for the opportunity. So, uh, here for, um, this presentation is about request for authorization for the professional services agreement for the design phase one of Silvercrest Drive. Again, I'll go, I'll talk about background, scope of the project, we'll talk about the phases, advertisement, expense, funds, and questions and motion. So Silvercrest Drive and some of the adjacent roads were already planned for paving upgrades in the next few years. Civil Lake Water Source District has a major pipe replacement project that would impact the pavement in twenty twenty-seven. Somas is the consultant responsible for designing water and sources now for the district. What we're, our intention is that one combined construction effort with the district would be equal to fewer disruption and lower cost. And you can see the map of those, uh, Silvercrest Drive and the adjacent roads.
Sorry to ask a question during the presentation, but just, I, I see the, the, the three thousand linear feet, that's the Silvercrest Drive, right?
Yes.
Correct. And then the seven hundred linear feet of twenty-eighth and, and the eighteen hundred linear feet of another street. Those are all additional roads that would, would be included in this maintenance and repair. Okay, so every one of these, wherever you see a road, that's, that's part of the project. Okay, thank you.
So, uh, this project, uh, involves comprehensive, comprehensive street, street improvements along Silvercrest Drive between approximately Twenty-Sixth Avenue Souths and Thirty-Fifth Avenue Souths. The planned scope involved new pavement installation, sidewalk construction, addition of bike lanes, upgrade to the storm drainage system. So at these pictures, the top one is the current condition of the road. And the lower one is the, one of the possibility of the potential complete district, so it's one of the alternatives.
Do we already have the right of way for the roadway design?
We do, probably yes. We, we need to look at it.
Okay.
So, um, this project will be delivered, delivered in two phases. Phase one, uh, preliminary design, which is ten percent alternative analysis, which includes initial evaluation of the design options. Thirty percent design submit all, which will be early draft plans for review. And also supplemental surveying, additional field data collection, geotechnical engineering and so on. Phase two would be final design and bid support, which is sixty percent, ninety percent design submittingals. Which is detailed draft plans for internal and external review, bid document preparation, which is creating construction bid packages. Supplemental surveying, environmental review and all the other items will be covered as phase two. This project was advertised on March eleven, two statements of qualification received, Somas selected as the preferred consultant. Their qualification matches aligned with the city's goal and project timeline. Uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget includes four million one hundred fifty thousand dollar appropriation in the road improvement fund for the Silvercrest Drive project. As part of the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty capital improvement plan. Phase one design is budgeted as three hundred thousand four hundred thirty-one dollar, which is within the authorized allocation. Thank you for the opportunity, please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, any questions? Hearing none, any motions?
Uh, I'll just make a quick comment before I make a motion, if that's alright. I, I, I think we, we all knew this was coming anyway, right? We, the, the water district is going to be tearing up the road, so it'd be silly not to take advantage of the moment. So I, I'll happily make a motion, uh, move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with, I'll say this correctly, Somas in the amount of three hundred thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and two cents, inclusive of all taxes upon the concurrence of the city attorney.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no proposed new initiatives on the agenda, so that brings us to our study session regarding Library Park and the Veterans, Veterans Monument Project Discussion, Mr. Director Todd.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem and Council. We are back to talk about Veterans Park. Uh, so what I'm going to do here is kind of do a reprise, we figured out the arrow keys don't work, we got the, what's the clue, what'd you guys figure out? There it is. Um, so recap the background, project constraints, kind of from June tenth, we're going to cover those things fairly quickly. Recap the funding, there was some confusion and some questions about that, so I want to go through that again and talk about the constraints on those grants. And then I was, just a reminder, we'll go through this, that we are done with the concept phase. Remember our phases is concept, planning and scoping, then design and construction. We're kind of done with the concept, but we're at the point where we're trying to do this design, this, this planning and scoping, so we can go right into the design phase. What we're looking for tonight is some directions on that scoping to make sure we all have agreement before we hire a designer and send them off on their merry way, start spending our dollars. So this is the inexpensive time to get our last ideas out to make sure we head in the right direction. And then so tonight's, our outcome is exactly that, let's talk about the scope, let's talk about the agreements, let's get all those questions answered, then we want to get ready to move to the design phase. So a little background, the same slide from a couple of weeks ago, remember the monument was built back in twenty-ten, consistently wet. They did some drainage when they first did it in twenty-ten. It turned that, looked at it, it was two inch pipes with perforated pipes and it's just kind of gotten clogged over the years. Uh, we are out of space for names, uh, did the count, there's three hundred and eighty names out there. There's twenty-one each side of three columns or six columns, three sides each, there's three hundred and eighty names in about a ten-year period that we've used up. We do not have a list of names that are waiting, I think we just turned it off when we ran out of space.
On the, regarding the names, who is eligible to be put up there?
Anybody who wants to be put up there and has somebody pay you with like eighty or ninety dollars for the cost of doing so. So they don't, it's, they have, had to have served in the military, so it's their name in the branch of service. Uh, living or passed and Mill Creek or not, there's no, no constraints.
And I think that's something we're going to have to discuss because I was under the mistaken assumption it was those who have sacrificed their lives for it. And so I was a little surprised when I went up to the monument and saw Senator Lovick and Mr. Wright's names on there and I was like, wait a second, they're here. Um, so I mean, as we're going to hear in this presentation, we're out of space and we're looking for ways to expand it. But I think we've got to have a discussion at some point, not tonight, about who we're going to accommodate going forward for names. Otherwise, two, three, five, ten years from now, the council is going to be having the same discussion, what do we do? Are we talking high-rise, uh, monuments if we're, but so, it was something we need to, council needs to think about in the future.
Exactly, thank you.
So if, if I can just, that's the first, I'm hearing that, that it's my understanding that it's a memorial.
That's what I thought too.
And so if we're adding, um, put this mildly, the living, uh, we're intentionally running out of space and, and shooting ourselves in the foot, so.
And it's not just Mill Creek residents either. It's open to anyone.
I wasn't aware of that, thanks.
So if Chief White were here, he would say he liked the opportunity not being a Mill Creek resident, but to be able to honor his father who'd served. I would have said, I would like to honor my father who served, he lived in Portland. So that, I think that was the argument for doing that. The reason it's called a monument instead of a memorial was a discussion that happened back in twenty-ten. It was a monument because it was Chuck Wright and Senator Lovick and probably about half of those people were, are, or were, uh, living at that time.
And, and their services, we're thankful for their service, but I think we have, like I said, limited space and so we need to figure out how best to use that space with our resources, but.
Yeah, and so that, maybe later on tonight, that's one of the things, you know, if we want to have a twenty-year life on this, just at that current rate, you need space for eight hundred more names.
Yeah.
Or something, so that's, that's one of the topics for tonight. Put down there.
Yeah, Councilmember J K has a question.
What year was the playground?
Playground, when we look at the pictures from twenty-ten, I had that presentation back in, in, uh, in twenty twenty-four. That playground structure was there in the background for the constructions pictures in twenty-ten, so it's earlier than twenty-ten, I don't know what year it was put in.
Perfect, just because you mentioned the year of the Veterans Monument and then I didn't see the playground, so then I was, you know, when it was replaced or anything like that?
I think that's the one that's been there for a long time. The, the parking lot was expanded, I think it was twenty-two thousand seven or so. And that may have been done at that time, it wasn't part of that project. And I, I can't remember.
But I, but I think that's an important comment that we need to keep in mind in the context. This project, background with all due respect, is a little bit misleading when we say, lead off with Veterans Monument. Cause the project was, Parks and Recs Board brought to us their proposal, their top priority was to improve the Taught Lot at Library Park. And our discussion was, well, there's drainage issues we need to deal with, with the existing park, which is the Taught Lot and the amphitheater, which is not being utilized as it was intended because of the drainage. So the project was, let's look at the drainage to figure out how we can improve the park, as the Parks Board has recommended we do. And oh, by the way, where we're at it, we're going to need to do drainage if we want to think about expanding the monument. So let's look at what options we might have there. So I think it's just important to remember the project was the Taught Lot.
Yes, and, and if I can add, conversations about the amphitheater were actually brought to us by the Arts and Beautification Board. When they were, when we were talking about ARPA funding, when they were talking about opportunities for things that were more than just, um, visual arts, like I'm trying to think of the term that, um, um, uh, Jean, that she explained to it, yeah. Thank you, yeah, yeah, so there, so there's something, there's something to that too. Cause Parks wanted to focus on the Taught Lot area and expansion of that area. And then Arts and Beautification in that same, I think, present, same day, just mentioned amphitheater. Um, about opportunities for live play, what, whatever, it wasn't necessarily for that space, but there was like an idea for like a stage or what that might look like, and I know there's been continued conversation. So there's three groups that are interested in this area.
Yeah, with the amphitheater though, I think we need to keep in mind the distinction between utilizing it as it was intended versus expanding the use, which is a whole different issue.
One hundred percent, yes, but I just wanted to flag in terms of this section that we're on on this page for project background, that um that's why I wanted to know the years, because I didn't see it later on in the presentation, so thank you.
I should have said this is a reprise, this is like.
I understand, I wasn't here for the for the first go around, so.
So you're right, the order is the the fourth bullet there was a playground capacity and safety issue, the first came to us, then it was drainage.
That's what started us down this path.
Exactly, yeah. Let me keep going here.
Yeah, actually, the Veterans Memorial Monument, that was totally separate from all of that.
Yeah.
But now it's been brought in and is, you know, you've read this through all of this earlier, the majority of the funding's coming from the monument and two hundred fifty thousand, and then only a hundred thousand, I think, of the three fifty was.
I will get to a recap of the funding.
So yeah, but we're getting a little confused here on what's leading this, the there's separate project, nothing's leading, it's separate projects. It's a monument project and there's a library project, but now we're trying to put them together.
I disagree, we weren't gonna be doing the monument without the the tot lot.
No, I disagree. The monument project, we went out and got funding from the state just for the monument project alone, what would what was needed to get it done. And then there is separate funding from the ARPA or now RPB funds that were for the 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 library project, so there was were two separate projects. And the funding for the monument all was coming from uh uh the the state fund, the two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant we got.
Understand, what's the point, what's the point of that?
Pardon me?
What is it? I don't understand what's the point of that, because both are gonna need drainage, so it becomes one project. Because you can't distinguish the drainage you need for the monument versus the drainage you need for the other improvement.
Here's the point of distinction. We had a drainage issue and a library park issue, which we had an answer for. We had RPB funds and and a drainage project that we were going to do, that that was all set up and laid out by itself. Then we were asked to get involved by the state and get the funding necessary to fix a number of things about the monument project. So when we were doing the monument project, we said the funding for the drainage was already taken care of. That was a separate project that we'd already brought in front of the council and already decided upon. So that was done. Then the monument project, the two hundred fifty thousand for that was separate, just what it was going to take to fix the monument.
Let's let the let's get into discussion after we finish the presentation.
Thank you. So again, this is a reprise, this is the wetland delineation chart. Last time, there was some confusion about the dotted lines, remember the wetlands were delineated because we were concerned about that. The dotted lines of the buffer, to help us all, I colored the picture a little bit, I did a little bit of craftiness here, if I can get this to go forward. So the green is all that's really available to develop, that's the small developable area, you really can't do anything inside of the wetland or the buffers. The red line at the top is kind of around where the where the playground is, the red circle at the bottom is where the where the monument is. You can see the monument itself, the columns are in that dark gray pentagonal shape there or a tropical shape, I guess it is, that's actually in the wetland buffer, probably shouldn't have been put there, but back then, we didn't worry as much about wetland buffers. But that point is, there's not much developable area. The area between the playground at the top and the monument was where it was proposed to extend, add some more structure, more playground kinds of stuff, and that's where we first discovered it was so wet and swampy. We couldn't just go put a hundred thousand bucks worth of play equipment, so that's what got us started on this. Uh purple is kind of where the trails are existing, they're either call them sidewalks if they're paved concrete or trails if they're path, if they're asphalt, and that's kind of where that's mostly where they are right now. The boy, this is not, so to go back to the grants, and so the first grant we got, first thing we started, as the mayor pointed out, we started to talk about a tot lot when we were asking for ideas for RPB money, ARPA money, the RPB money. So we went to the went to the county, this is a reprise of exactly that slide. We went and asked for two hundred fifty thousand dollars with that scope of work that we described last time. There was some confusion about what was in the scope, so here is the exact scope that is in the agreement. It says repair soggy grass areas, repair heaved pathways, plaza panels, and add play equipment and improves drainage. We have a signed contract for that for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. It was signed in May, awarded by the county council in April, we signed it in May, it is our money, it needs to be spent by the end of this year. There I saw in the paper, somebody else just got there when he extended, so there's hope that we can get it extended, but you're always in danger of the county saying, oops, we're short of money this year and getting it swept, that's happened to us before. And so sense of urgency here is, once we know that we're moving forward with the project, that we can describe the project and have it in design, I feel like confident we go to the county and say, would you like to please extend this to twenty twenty six? We have the same council member, I think he'll probably support that. I I feel highly confident we can do that, but right now, we're not ready to go and ask them to extend it, because we haven't shown any any real due diligence on this yet, so just letting you know, that's where the county money sits. The other big discussion was the state money. Boy, this. I really wish there was a mouse there, there we go. Uh so a prize, this is again what we said on June tenth, we quoted it down there, we were paraphrasing down there in terms of scope of work, expanding the Veterans Memorial Monument, modernizing the monument, additional space for names, include repairs, maintenance and site improvements, very broad, so that it gets easily satisfy the needs of the state, so that they don't come back and say, you didn't do that one thing. So again, here's what the contract itself says. The design and construction to expand the Veterans Memorial Monument by revising and modernizing the monument to provide additional space for the names of those who've served, along with repairs, maintenance, and other improvements to the site, that's exactly the language. So those are the things we need to satisfy. If you don't satisfy that, then some contract management person might go, well, you didn't do the whatever, we're not gonna pay. So the what you want to do is you want to make this broad enough that it gets approved by the legislature, but not so uh broad that they won't approve it, but not not narrow in fashions that you won't be able to to execute. So trying to clarify, we've got two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred sixty dollars, it was two hundred fifty eight thousand dollar award from the state, minus the three percent the Congress takes to administer the grant, is two fifty, we got two fifty from the county. And the third piece of this was the city funding, so we had potentially allocated about a hundred thousand dollars, is what the park board asked for in the first place, out of that ARPA money that became RPB money. And they wanted to wanted to do uh uh the the park improvements we've talked about before. No matter what the project costs, we need to be able to say to the state, we have the funding in place, kind of the project. So once we get through the design phase, we'll know it's gonna be five hundred ninety seven dollars and thirty five cents. We will go to the state and say, we are confident we got that money between the the county grant, the state grant, and our own money, about a hundred thousand dollars we're shooting for, a hundred thousand or less. We'll be able to say we can do that, and that's how we what we need to do to be able to execute the grant with the county.
Mike, tell me if my recollection is wrong, uh because I was involved with Jared in all these discussions about the grant. These come about fast and furious, we get phone calls saying, we got X amount of money, what can you use it for? And we put in a number based on a wag of two hundred fifty thousand bucks. And we, because this all came about in a matter of weeks to get that request into the budget, so Jared could get that money allocated to us. We had not done any detailed analysis of what the cost of the drainage was site. That is why, and we learned after we got that money in and requested, we did a little more work and realized, we ain't getting there with two hundred fifty thousand bucks just to even do the tot lot with what's gonna be required there, which is why we worded the state grant very broadly. And that's why I don't think there's any disagreement, we all want all of this to happen. But they're different grants, but it is one project, because we couldn't do one without the other. There's not enough dollars to do the tot lot alone with two fifty, and there's not enough dollars to do the memorial expansion with just two fifty. That's why I there's not enough to do the tot lot improvements with only two hundred fifty thousand bucks. And there's two hundred fifty thousand bucks wouldn't be enough to do just the expansion of the Veterans Monument.
Why do you say that?
Because the drainage work is needed to do for anything we do on that site, because of the wetland constraints and the drainage issues.
So because the drainage issues are costing more than we had allocate than we thought, we want to, we 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 want to apply that to the cost of the Veterans Memorial.
I'm telling you, that's why the staff worded the grant the way they worded it, because they knew the two hundred fifty we got from the county was not gonna be enough to do either project. So we worded it very broadly, so we could have enough to finish the site work, so we could do anything on the ground, whether it was the park and or the monument.
Okay, and that was not explained to the people that was putting together, just the people that put together the state grant, mayor. They went, they were told to be very specific with the attendees as to what we would do, what we would apply in order to justify the two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And that and that, Councilmember Cavalry.
Thanks, Mayor. Um I mean, what we know, what we knew then and what we know now are are two different things, and that's why the staff has written the requests broadly. I think even just reviewing the wetland study, we have to revise our expectations now at this point of of are we gonna be able to, I don't want to say cram all these things in there, but but satisfy every council member's wants and needs. And 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 to be honest, we've been through this before, once the wetland study comes back, look at DRCC, we're not doing fields anymore, look at Cougar Park, we're not part two, we're not doing anything over there because of the wetland, these are the realities that come up later, so uh kudos to the staff for writing the grant so broadly, but nothing gets done until the drainage is done, but we've always known that. And it's we, so now we know the cost of poker i- is is my two cents on the matter, so Mayor, you accurately depicted uh the way the grants rolled out, and that's my understanding of them as well.
Councilmember Duque.
I really appreciated this slide and this discussion that we're having right now, because as someone who feels like they were very much involved in this throughout our conversations both here and then at Parks Board, I did not know that that the state grant had that that it needed the, as quote here, that enough funds from all sources have been secured to complete the project, right? So I didn't know that that was blended in when that was created, so this was very helpful for me to understand why I needed to think of the project. Uh uh because at first, when I thought about, oh, we're combining it because it's the same area, efficiency makes sense, put one project engineer on this, you know, that's what we, those are the things that we do. But it's clear, it's because they are intertwined, and so that, it wasn't until like I looked at this and understood it, and then of course, the conversation now, that I really understand that, and I thought I had understood it, so thank you for this.
Councilmember Sticker.
You know, when when there was no discussion about the uh needing to you allocate funds from the state for the um wetland situation that we had. In fact, we were told that's already been taken care of with the other grant.
Oh, we weren't.
At the time that we did that, obviously, it's coming, we didn't know that that wasn't enough. Otherwise, uh now we're finding out of that two hundred fifty thousand that we got for the monument project, and there were specifics that were exchanged between the group and, you know, the senator and and other representatives about what we would get for that money and why we were asking for those things of that money, including some items here that have totally gone away, such as additional parking spaces and a few other things. But those were discussion items that we had with them as to why we needed two hundred fifty thousand.
Who's we had with them?
The our A and B committee, along with uh Senator Lovick, and uh along with um um I'm sorry, I'm blanking on his name, um.
Chuck Wright.
Pardon me?
Chuck Wright.
Chuck Wright, and this was at the direction of the city, to to work with them, come up with what he wanted, so that he could go back, he, Senator Lovick, come up with what he wanted, be specific about what kind of elements we would have, and then he can go back and ask appropriations committee for the the money, the two hundred fifty thousand. But he went back and said, here's all the thing, now whether we wrote the grant vaguely to cover our butts is not what we told Senator Lovick.
Who, but John, the A and B board does not speak for the city, so what you told Senator Lovick is not.
Told, we were told by the city.
No, we.
We, the A and B committee, were told by the city to sit down with Senator Lovick and Chuck Wright and to work out the specifics of what would be the elements of the Veterans Memorial Monument. At the time, at the time, the names were one part of it, but the names could be solved for a hundred thousand dollars by just adding some some uh uh placards in between the the columns. That wasn't the purpose, the purpose was how could we enhance the entire Veterans Memorial to get upwards of two hundred fifty thousand? So we came up with all these additional benefits. You're not aware, obviously, of all this, all the details here.
Well, I I've been aware of the discussions, and part of the challenge I think we're having is five of us remember it one way, and one of you remembers it a different way.
Well, that's kind of. Only one of us was involved with the senator and Chuck Wright in putting together the details of the Veterans Memorial Monument. Then we, the committee, we didn't bring Senator Lovick or Chuck Wright with us, but we, the committee, met with the city management and went through the list of particular items, elements of what we were going to have.
And what's not, what's not gonna be done with what's on the table? I think we're all in agreement, it sounds like we have five hundred, six with a hundred thousand from the city. We have six hundred thousand dollars, and what we're trying to figure out is to come up with designs on how we can do the tot lot that the Parks Board wanted and do an expansion of the Veterans Monument, so I'm not sure what we're arguing about.
What we're arguing about is what elements will be included in the expansion of the Veterans Monument beyond just adding some space for names. There were other specific enhancements. I want to make sure that those that were very big, that were, uh I want to make sure those get accomplished.
Like what?
Uh we've talked about this in the last meeting, it was in the minutes, but it included the seating, it included the lighting.
Can you continue with the, is there more presentation?
I think it might be helpful if I went went showed, I get some pictures and I got.
So let's see pictures.
But I, what we're gonna propose as the essential elements, and then the other things that were added on there, let's have a discussion around those things that we get some.
Good idea.
Okay with you. Okay, so um where are we now? Again, a little bit of recap, but we've established the constraints, we know the site conditions. We had to pause, remember why we found out about the wetlands, and as Councilmember Cavalry pointed out, that was always the rude surprise. Here we go, we got a budget, we got a scope now. We need to establish that basic scope to issue an RFQ to go hire a designer, until we do that, we won't know much. And what I'm proposing there is that number two, the next step, once we hire a designer, we're gonna work with staff to execute the scope, both these essential elements and other desired features during this fall and winter. And we're gonna do this a little bit different than we might normally do it, we'll kind of do it in phases, we'll get some preliminary ten percent kind of ideas, here's some concepts. So I think you all, we all, will be feel better, we could say, I like that idea, I'm not so fond of that idea, oh, that's way too expensive, oh, that look would be kind of a cute way to do it. So I think until we have some things we can touch and feel, some sketches, I think it's gonna be hard for us to decide. This is an aesthetic thing, it's not a a road that has to have this kind of traffic, this kind of ADA ramps, that's a different kind of design project where with all due respect, you just very quickly pass those kinds of design projects, because there are very specific technical requirements. Every time we talk about parks, it this happens, it's happened all my years here, and it's it's it makes sense, this is something we want to be proud of. I think there's an opportunity with this much money to do a bunch of good things. But again, we've got to be careful, we don't overspecify before we even hire the professionals to do the work, so that's what number two is about, sorry for long words. They will generate what we call PSE, the Plan Specifications Estimates, that gives us the engineer's estimate, that's the number. We need to be able to go to the state and say, we think it's gonna be five hundred seventy five thousand dollars, and we know we got all the money. Please, let's execute the contract. So until we can execute the contract, we don't really have that money. Good news is they probably won't swipe it, it goes till June of twenty twenty seven. But until we have that, we don't have that contract really complete, so that's the next step there. We'll have to extend the county again, once we know what we're gonna go for, I think we can make a great credible story back to the county, both the the staff and the legislative people there to do that. We'll put it out for construction, hopefully constructed next year if we get this going, and we will close out the project next summer. We'll apply for reimbursement, these are all reimbursement grants, where they're gonna check, did you do what you said you're gonna do? We'll pay for that, and we'll put a plaque on both, plaque up there for both the state and the county, so people get to celebrate that, and we'll have a nice ribbon cutting. Uh just a reminder, this is for a prize from last time, there was a discussion with advisory boards, we remember that from last time. Just to kind of put it back in context, this is looking from the north towards the south. This is that existing play structure that showed up in the pictures in twenty ten, it's remarkably good, it's one of those metal ones that's lasted really well. It's kind of small, it doesn't have, we did not put play chips here, because we thought we were gonna be moving forward, so it's low on play chips right now, but you can see if you're gonna expand this, you're gonna have to expand that. Serving, this is the very wet area we ran into, here's more of a close up going further towards the back, this is the backside of the monument. We know now this is in the wetland buffer, but you can see it's it's grassy area there. And this is a reminder of what the the monument looks like if you're coming at it from the north. You guys have seen this before, these columns, I said there's twenty one names on each side, I don't know if that was decided twenty one was somehow important, but there's twenty one times three times six is the three hundred eighty. Uh this is just showing that these trees were planted ten years ago, fifteen years ago, are quite mature trees, and so are now part of the monument, as far as I'm concerned, so we need to think about. There is existing uplighting on the flagpole, you can see it here, and we have this thing that remoners, that honors the five different branches of service. A couple of things to think about, we talked about seating, right now there are benches there, there's three benches exist, we talked about, we'll see it here, and then it may be enhancing that that thing, we want to honor the fact that this is the garden club, put this one in, this is one from the Chamber of Commerce, excuse me, the Rotary. And this one here, they don't, the bench is dedicated, but there's rocks, various places that dedicated a tree to somebody or other, so I think that's also a parameter, I would tell the designers is, let's honor those things that have happened before. This is on the back of that uh that rock that shows the five branches of the services, it it honors the donors. So again, I don't want to lose track of that, these people did give some money and and put some heart and soul into this in the first place. Here's the kind of problems we've got, so while the money, we. Here's the kind of problems we've got. So while the money, we originally were looking at for money for the tot lot or the soggy area. This is evidence of that soggy area kinds of stuff. There, there's, there are stones that are heaved here. So that's why we said it's probably not fixing the drainage just on the north end isn't going to do it. We really ought to look at all of it. That's why there's drainage in both projects. Just down here, there's the entrance to it. It'd be nice. We did something a little bit nicer, but I personally think that tree is something we would want to honor. That path in here has got this problem here was got a cone on it. It's a big problem. So this is the kind of thing we'll also tell the designers, these are the kinds of site improvements, repairs and modifications that we had, uh, to be city manager put into the thing. So site improvements covers these kinds of things without saying eight bench, a different sidewalk, a rock, those kinds of things. So here, this is where it gets down to. I will, I will look at these items, talk them through, and then I'm going to turn it over to you for required elements. And I'll just let you know the next one is going to be the additional possible design elements. So I'm proposing that when we go out and advertise for a designer, we tell them this is the scope of the project. These things have to be there or you're going to help us change those to be what we have to have there. And then we're going to say, we'd also like to do these other things if you can afford them, but make sure you don't violate these basic principles. So overall, in this whole thing, we're saying there's really no change to the overall purpose. It's still a playground. It's still a Veterans Monument and we know it's a parking challenge site. That's regardless, adding parking spaces is probably not something that really we could do. It's very expensive. Again, we want to, we want to honor what's there. There's some basic elements, the same basic elements, same basic arrangement. We're thinking the direction the designers probably don't dig it all up and move it other places, honor the fact that it's there and how can we expand it? So hence the word expand versus rebuild. Uh, honor the existing monument, provide additional space for names. That's number one for the Veterans Monument was more names. Fencing around the existing playground for safety and adding to or expanding the playground with the desire of the Parks Board in terms of making that space bigger and more useful, maybe for other ages. Improve the drainage throughout the park because the soggy conditions don't help anything out there. And that's where a lot of the money is going to go. Uh, we put down repair, replace existing sidewalks and paths. That's an important part of this. And then down at the bottom, in the course of all this, of course, they're going to update the plantings, the irrigation. While you dig it up, that's the time to fix the irrigation. Got some bad spots in there now and preserve the large trees. Not, this is not about cutting down trees. It's really about preserving that space the way it is, the same look and feel, same purpose, no real changes.
When you say scope, are you anticipating they're going to bring us back different alternatives? Different alternatives for tot lots or expansion and different alternatives for what we can do with the monument?
Yeah.
It's not going to be like one option. Here's what it is.
Exactly. Like here's more columns or here's a wall or here's plaques that will go in the ground or engraved bricks. And you got to have a chance to say, oh, here's the plus and the minus of engraved bricks. I have my own opinions, but here's, we'll get them to give us some ideas and you can say, I like that idea or I don't. And based on their experience designing parks and similar kinds of spaces, they probably have better ideas than I've got or that Dan has or that Miriam has. Or that we all have together. I think that's the benefit of hiring a designer to do that kind of thing. And they'll know what, what these things kind of, kind of things cost.
Do we have a list of those improvements for the A and B board of what they've recommended for the monument?
This proposed scope was put together by Dan and Miriam after they met with the A and B board and the Park Rec Board had a joint meeting back in April, May, in May, and took what we already knew and put this li- list together as the required elements. And Mr. Mayor, we talked about this last month when you weren't here.
Yeah.
And then this second slide here was the things that were, I'm calling them would, would be nice or the possible design elements. We said, and we'd really, Park, Park Rec Board said fence, fence the tot lot so it's safe. More toys for more ages would be great. And we'd really love swings if you can put them in there. Swings sometimes are tough because of the space requirements and things like that. So I think they recognize that if you could do swings, we'd love to have it. ADA swings, maybe try not to be over specific, but to say triad swings. A and B board says, how about additional lighting, more visibility, more safety throughout the park, more uplighting. Were some of the ideas we captured those here, additional flagpoles that came from the A and B board. They said, wouldn't it be cool if we had more flagpoles per state and city flags and for each armed service branches? We put down that something we would tell the designer, consider this, tell us how this might fit in the space and how it would look, what, what it would be.
So when you have down on this list, expanding the plaza, is all the other things you're saying going in within the existing footprint?
So we had a discussion about that too. And it was, it, in general, we can't add impervious surface. But we said, expand the, the plaza. I think councilmember Allison summed it up pretty well was if you're going to put more columns in the plaza, you've got to have more room for those columns. So of course it's going to expand a little bit, but that was an idea. We also talked about the concept of expanding the seating for having a space for celebration kind of seating. So if we're having a memorial day ceremony, it's a place to put folding chairs, so some grasscrete or something, or there's still a pervious surface to the west. So we're not in the buffer, we're not in the wetland, but we'd do that. So it'd still be grassy area for most of the year, but it'd be a place when we fold out the chairs. They're not sinking into the, to the mucky area. So that's the last one there about expanding, not expanding it in a big way, but it was really driven by names and better seating for those 100 people that come to a, a celebration. Not, again, not changing this to be a, an attractor for new events because we all know it's parking's parking challenge.
Before I get back to John, on where, there's a big grass area to the west. Uh, s- south of the parking and west of the monument area. Do we have, have we seen a map? Where does the library end and the park begin? So what, what is considered the area that we have to work with?
This area right there, the green. So what you're talking about, here's the monument. This is a, a swale, a low depression. And that's where everything kind of drains. It's got some big trees. There's not really much grass in there.
Okay. The area I was thinking about is that we're just to the right of where the bottom line, where it says approximately 2,500 square feet. I wasn't, that's what I was getting, getting at. I wasn't sure if that's.
Lot of grass there. It's.
There's some, but there, there, there's a little area, but I just wasn't sure if that was part of the park or whether that was part of the library.
The, well, the library parcel is the one that's not outlined here. This is the library parcel. And then the park is this and all of 156th Street is not actually right away. It's a parcel.
Oh, really?
It's a funny T shaped thing. Yeah. It's a, it's a city owned parcel, not a street.
Okay.
We treat it like a street to operate the same way.
Councilor.
So you're right. Mr. Mayor, if you're saying, would we also consider this area? I think we could say, let's put in a new picnic table there or a new something rather. That's outside of the buffer area. And I don't think we have much trouble.
Do we have to get approval from Snow Isle if we wanted to do something like that?
Still our property, still our building.
Okay. Councilor Steckler.
And could we go back to the slide that you had the additional ideas?
Sure. That one.
Yeah. Just as a point of clarification, I was at the meeting with Dan and together and everyone else. And we talked about, um, what we were looking for. They were asking for specifics about the ideas for putting panels between the columns. That was our idea to give us the additional names on the front and the back. And that's, we also, and it, it kind of got on this track of, well, we're going to be doing other things like, uh, that, that would be all we would do. And we said, no, there's, there's a lot of things that we added to this proposal. So the ones of additional uplighting at the memorial park, the flagpoles and the, uh, a, a few additional seats of cement that would reflect as being part of the memorial, those were the three things that we told Dan, the group that, that were critical, that we had to have. The other things weren't as big, like the parking and the, we had the amphitheater in there and a couple of other, uh, uh, things that, that, uh, added to the cost of 250,000. But these were the three that, that, that the A and B board in discussions with Chuck and, and, and John, they were very excited about, and these were, these were also very important, not very costly at all. Especially if you've got additional lighting and you're talking about maybe moving some of the, the plates underneath the, um, for drainage, then you, you know, that's, that's, none of those are very big things. The other ones were bigger. So those were the three things that, that not were additional design elements. They were critical components that we wanted to make sure we saved.
Well, but, but we've got to keep something in mind. The A and B board is an advisory board to the council.
We're advising.
A and B board does not make decisions on design elements. So I'm perfectly fine with what's been outlined and saying with these other items and on the ones you've identified, we want to see what options we have to put those in. And maybe that we choose some of them over adding swings. But this body, the seven of us make that decision, not the A and B board.
Right.
A and B board has recommended that we try to incorporate these things. And I think that's exactly what staff has done.
But the aim, I, I, I understand what you're saying. The A and B board recommended of all the things that they had in that $250,000 proposal that besides just the additional names, these three were critical to maintain in there and they weren't costly. Uh, you have to say, well, that's, that's not their right to even ask that or suggest that. I think it's their, their right to ask that or suggest that. That's, those are critical components because they were the ones that were told to put this thing together.
That's all I'm saying is that's the recommendation they've made for those to be considered, and that's what staff has done. And that, all those discussions, correct me if I'm wrong, occurred after the grant had been issued by the state and included in the budget.
The discussion with Dan and his group was after the grant was established. All the other discussions were in advance. Councilmember Duque.
Oh, that, I think what you said is, what I'm understanding is we've now, we've heard from, what our discussion today is. We've heard from Arts and Beautification Board, from Parks and Rec, we've heard from staff. Now it's coming to us. Now we get to look at it based off of what we've heard from what others want. Now we get to put in our, what our suggestions are, what our priorities are as a council to then officially give that to staff to do. So while it's important to hear, to know what everyone, all of these suggestions are, plus our own internal conversations with people that we know um, in the city who are interested. So now that's what we're doing tonight is that we need to. So our, basically our decisions may be very different than what's here, as long as they still align with the funding opportunities.
Right. And just so I'm clear, John, the three that you're talking about, that the A and B board thought were critical are the middle three?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Cavalier.
Uh, just, just real quick. Uh, I, I don't really understand. Um, I don't want to say dickering or bickering, but the proposed scope and the additional scope are exactly what everybody on both boards and, and the entire council has been asking for. So instead of trying to build it here now in front of us, how about we wait and get a couple of renderings, right? Get a couple of renderings in front of us as, as the, uh, city engineer is, as proposed. And, and then we'll say, hey, no, we would prefer to do X, Y, Z instead of trying to die on that hill now. We realize that, um, the A and B board adamantly wanted, um, a couple of things. And I realized the Parks Board, because I sat on it, that they wanted a couple of things. But, but to the mayor's point, the council makes that decision and when we have it in front of us, we can make that decision then. So I got, I think we understand the city has good, a good line of sight to, you know, to move forward with this program that we don't need to, um, kill it any further. How's that? Thanks.
I'll, I'll say from a practical standpoint, this really practical standpoint, somebody's going to write an ad. It's going to go in the Everett Herald that says, we would like to hire a designer to do this scope. And selfishly, we'd like to have that be these items. And say, one of the, we don't want a designer who's willing to bring forward some concepts and look at additional enhancements and features and, and then bring, bring those back to the council for review, something like that. So kind of tell them it's a, a two-phase design thing. So we're going to find somebody who's going to say, that sounds like a fun project to work on. I got some great ideas. And we're going to pick that designer and that designer is going to work with you and with us on what could be done. I'm just, the reason we're being cautious about this is telling them they have to have seven flagpoles.
Right.
In every alternative, maybe something we really would like them to say, well, here's an alternative that has seven flagpoles. Here's one that has three. Here's one that has one. And if we say it has to have all of these things, we're overly constraining their creative process. That's the reason to split this a little bit.
John, did the A and B board have a recommendation on the last bullet point on expanding the plaza?
No.
Did it, that was a lower priority for it than the others?
That's something from the city. That wasn't part of the discussion.
So I mean, that might be something that's communicated is that was.
Go ahead, Dan.
Dan.
Um, that was in response to the A and B board's request for additional stabilized seating as Dr. Todd mentioned. So the expansion of the monument plaza was to provide additional space for the Memorial Day or Veterans Day events to have, uh, seating that's not in the grass for our veterans who may or may not have mobility issues. So that was what the intention of that expanded monument plaza phrase was.
Might've been a confusion then because the, the benches that we talked about were to be right in front of the monument, right on the, in front of the, where the sidewalk is, where those wooden benches are now, they could remain, but they would, we would add a couple of cement benches. So it wasn't about adding any monument space. So that was a confusion.
Is adding the space you were talking about, or someone referred to grasscrete? I mean, that would be not adding, but that would be a way of adding to the monument plaza without adding impervious.
Right. That, where we saw the benches going in here, not in part of the monument, monument plaza itself.
So I've been to these ceremonies for many, many years from the inception. What often happens is there's 50 people that want to sit down. The bus from Co- comes from Cozier, people come out of their homes. There's 50 people want to sit down, particularly when it's raining. And we don't have a spot right now, other than standing on the sidewalk or on those, there's room for six people on those three, two benches and three more or four more over there. The idea was to have a place you could set up 50 chairs. And I think if Jody, Jody's probably listening, but if she would, like she would concur that, that, that's the idea of celebration seating that I put in there. If the A and B board didn't ask for that, I apologize. That's probably a staff idea based on our experience.
Not a bad idea either.
Well, that's fine. I just wanted to understand what were the A and B board recommending, what they didn't.
Certainly.
Yeah. Yeah. That's all. It's not a bad idea. Just that wasn't what we.
And I think part of, yeah, I think part of the trick, I think it's up with councilmember Allison said, I listened back. It's if you're going to have seven flagpoles, the existing plaza doesn't work. If you're going to put in plaques or more columns, right now those columns are as close together as you really want them to be able to look at all the names. I don't really want to have, have to sneak between them. So I think that's where we talked about. Reality is we got to tell a designer, you're allowed to expand this, but remember you've got a buffer and you got a sidewalk and you got these constraints. There's limited, as councilmember Cavalier points out, it's just not much room to work with. We're going to have to work within that green, that green area. And there's not a lot of space.
Yeah. So my, my only concern with the, the primary and the secondary elements to the contract is that I thought getting more capacity for names was like one of the highest priorities.
It is. It is.
So that's why I put it here as the expand existing Veterans Monument to provide additional space for names.
Right.
After, don't change the overall purpose and honor what's there. It's kind of the top one for that. And the top one for the fence, for the kids was the fencing and expanding that.
Okay. Can you go to the second page?
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Expanding Monument Plaza needed for more names. Okay.
Yeah. Kind of putting that parallel, it reminds us what expanding, remember we had the trouble a month ago with what expanding meant.
Yeah. Thank you.
The difference here, this wasn't an A and B idea. This was a, uh, project that was given to A and B and A and B was told, you know, figure this out, make it work. Uh, work with the Senator, work with, with Chuck. And if we were just adding names, we would have submitted a different number, like a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, because it was not as, as big an issue. But the, the, the request was let's, let's see what else we can do to justify an allocation of 250,000. So that's where all the other ideas came up and a bunch of them we're not even talking about, which is fine. Uh, and we're kind of spitting hairs here. There's only a few little things that were, I, I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure that we do more than just enhance, just add the names. Because it's obvious then that we're using that money to do other things rather than the Veterans Memorial project. That was my concern.
But it's on, it's on the scope. It's on the scope of work, uh, exactly what you're saying. So again, it's like we're trying to pick out a property based on the curtains and the, and the bedding.
The scope is the additional items that I'm talking about.
Right. They're on there. If, if we can get those in there, let's do them.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess this whole process is really frustrating because I'm not sure at what point it became that the council isn't supposed to make decisions on these things and that we're not allowed to have our opinions and say so. And that's extremely frustrating. Um, we, I understand we're doing a scope. We're going to get different ideas. Um, I'm not in favor of having concrete benches. And so I, I understand that we're going to get some ideas and then we're still going to talk about this and decide which are the ideas that we, we would like. So hopefully that means that every single idea won't have concrete benches. I love the idea of having the impervious surface that you mentioned. I do not like the idea of having, adding concrete benches over there. I can think of a number of issues, um, that could come into play. So, um, I think we need to, everything is in here. So we need to make it say, okay, this, this does encompass everything. But I am really frustrated that it's being portrayed that we don't get an opinion on this. And so we are the council and we have the final say on what the project is. Um, and that's our job. So the number one thing is names and fencing in the lot. That was the top priorities. So I think we need to get back to making sure we're having that. And you've got the whole scope here of all the other things, we can see what they can put in here, out of those things with the money that we have and see what we end up with.
I may have not emphasized this enough or not explained it well enough. So this is number two, the bold here. The proposal is that council would. number two, the bold here, the proposal is that council would check in on these concepts and alternatives, so this is get the sketches, bringing them here, there's sketches that you would say, I really like that beautiful stone bench, I'm not in favor of stuff made out of wooden turbine blades, you know, or whatever the designer's gonna bring, there's all kinds of benches out there, some of them are more durable, some of them are more prone to have people sleep on them, you know, all those kinds of things, and so I think you'll get some expertise from these people who know what's the latest and greatest options, and you'll say, I like that kinda bench, I like that kinda bench, so there's not enough room for those, or, if you're gonna honor the one from the Rotary, uh is it okay to move it? You know, that's one of the elemental questions, they're gonna come and say, is it okay to leave it there, do we have to move it, like that little plaque, I can't remember who it's for, I think it's one of our past um council members, is somebody really attached to the tree and that little plaque, not quite sure, but that's one of the things we're gonna do, is check to make sure we don't offend somebody by moving that plaque, or taking that tree and moving it or removing it, it's not the healthiest tree, but it honors somebody, so I think that's one of the, that's the details we'll work with the designer on, and give you, it's the council lots of opportunities to check in on that.
Can you go-
Halfway through, kinda halfway through this design cycle.
Can you go to the slide that has the fundamental points, not the additional items?
The, the uh fundamentals next to last, whoops, just do it this way.
Okay, is there any disagreement that those are the core fundamental aspects of this?
I have a comment.
Huh?
I flushed mine.
Cavallari, Duquesne.
Thank you, so I wanna acknowledge that this is different than the packet that we were given over the weekend, because, oh, and, and um-
There's an email that went out with an updated proposal.
Just, yes, today.
I don't remember yesterday or today.
What I put in the packet was a new agenda summary, and then I ripped, there was a reprise of last time, so that's why it's green, and so this presentation was not in there.
Yes, correct, and that, the green that you mentioned that had the proposed scope there, looking at that one, that's the one I had feedback on about, like, no, I don't want this, in terms of what our discussion was for today, but based off of looking at, so not, whatever that one was, I'm not using that, but if, if this was now on the green paper, what you're saying, the proposed scope, slide sixteen, the no change to overall, honor the same basic elements, the new things that were never included in any of the previous discussions, were these really basic ones of the repair, replace existing sidewalks and paths, that wasn't in anyone's conversations, we're talking about it, um, or, you know, um, you know, those things, the update plantings, renew irrigation system, that was never in anyone's discussions, but are vital to this project, so I really appreciate staff's input into these things that A and B, uh, why can't speak to A and B, it wasn't in any of those meetings, except for the joint one, um, but Parks Board, that wasn't something that we were thinking about, and so this, to me, is really helpful, and this proposed scope that you have here, um, I feel very comfortable with, this is what you would go out and do the concepts for, um, if we're providing feedback, so, along with what the mayor is asking if everyone's okay with it. The only comment I wanted to make is, when it comes to improving drainage throughout the park to address soggy conditions, I hope it really focuses on just the area between the tot lot, and anything to do with the monument, because I happen to be one of, I guess the few, when I see expand the Monument Plaza, for me, that construction has to do with that soggy, like underneath, the, it, I don't think there's any way of improving or however that the pavement is, without addressing those concerns there. What I would not like to see any improvements on, is anything area near the amphitheater, which is taken out of this proposed scope that you've put here, because it is within the wetland buffer, so if anything, if anything, and it's probably not this project, I'd love to see more natural, not, not, non-invasive plants added to that area there, um, and then I'll say it again, and I know you'll, you won't roll your eyes, cuz you're super professional, but I'd love it to add to the additional area, um, any assessment of parking improvements. I know we can't improve the parking right now with this budget with anything like that, but I did see that in your proposed scope for additional items, there's an assessment for lighting improvements, so I think there's an opportunity there also to look at that, especially knowing the parcel with the parking lot of the, what you said of the street, so in terms of proposed scope, this, happy to support, um, you know, doing that, and when it comes to the additions, the swings, um, lighting's not necessarily an important thing for me, but the um, that, that idea of looking at the parking situation there with an assessment, I think would be really great.
What assessment are we looking for, cuz where would we add parking that doesn't cut into the monument or the, the tot lot?
There's that area, we'll see, so then, um, that is part of the looking at, right where the, if you go back to the slide, where there's the um amphitheater, so, there with this buffer, see-
Amphitheater kind of area, this is-
You see, you can't-
This is a berm that's got some trees in it, it's an elevated piece.
So it looked, just looking at that whole area, considering one fifty-six, what are the opportunities there? I'm not an expert in what that, what it could look like, but I'm asking for us, cuz that, in terms of the voice, we've heard from A and B Board, we've heard from Parks and Rec, we're all residents of this community who use this space, we're hearing from us, but as someone who's spoken to library staff, parking is an issue, and we're not trying to drive additional, or, at the end of the day, this parking is for the library, um, and it's already heavily used, and so thinking about, I'm not saying it's gonna happen with this budget, I respect and understand that, but I wouldn't be me if I didn't continue to push that this would be an assessment or something to look at as part of our overall co- conversations, especially before um things like lighting, when, you know, uh, or not like lighting for just, you know, decoration purposes, when there's like real problem in this area with um parking, thank you.
Can you, would, go back to the bullet points, which, we've identified which ones came from the, were there any of those bullets that were specific to the Parks Board?
The proposed scope, it sounds like that's okay, we should move to the next slide and talk-
Ye- yes, I think so, but I'm trying to figure out which bullets are reflected by the input from the Parks Board.
This is where the Parks Board was sweeping.
Okay, I'm just trying to think of the ways to word this, cuz really, we've got the, I think there's agreement, that we've got the core elements, the Parks Board wants us, if at all possible, to factor in a design that adds swings, and the A and B Board wants us to look at these next three bullet points, and staff recommends looking also possibility for expanding the Plaza. I think we've covered all the, the bases, I mean, that's where we're at, is we have the core project, and we're reflecting the input from the boards and staff of what they want the design options to take into consideration.
And that's what this is, right? I mean, we've, I mean, I was on the board, I, I've always known that swings were not a possibility, due to the movement of the swings, right, we, we've always known all these things, we've always known we're limited on space, I guess that's the frustrating part for me, there's, there's, unfortunately, God didn't make more land there to put more parking stalls, we're just at where we're at, and I know the library ideally would like more parking spots, they don't exist at this point, trying to do all these other things, so, I, I'm okay, I think the staff was very well thought out, putting the proposed scope and the uh additional scope, I, I, if you wanna memorialize with a motion, I'm happy to do it, I, I, I think we need to move on and stop beating this to death.
Come, I agree, Councilmember Steckler.
Last gasp, I just wanted, I sense a lot of frustration up here, and I wanted, in a spirit of clarification, um, you know, we, we're, we're gonna learn some stuff from this, but this was definitely a different situation that transpired here. The tot lot, the Library Park, that was in the city's viewpoint, that was a, a project, uh, the Monument Park was not a project that was in our plan, it was Senator Lovick who approached us and said, I can get you the money to get that done, so, when I say A and B Board wants these things, if it was just the A and B Board, and I didn't have the Senator and Chuck Wright involved in this decision, we, we wouldn't be having this discussion, but, so it's not that really the A and B Board is pressing on this, it's that we, we had these meetings with Senator Lovick, A and B Board was tasked with doing the project, and-
No, it wasn't.
It was, it was-
John, it, John, with all due respect, it was not, we've, we're having some revisionist history here, what happened was, the Senator did not come to us before we started talking about the park, he learned that we were working on expanding the park, and came to us, said, wouldn't it be great if we could also expand the monument?
That's what I just said.
No, it wasn't what you just said.
Senator Lovick came to the city and said, I'd like to, you know, see us expand the monument.
Yes, there's no disagreement on that, and then, uh, we, Stephanie and I had many discussions with the city manager on how the, this was then gonna be allocated, cuz we had a Parks Board and the A and B Board, which is his fall under, so what was decided-
A and B.
It was not given, it was asked-
Assigned, A and B.
It was given to give recommendations for what improvements they would recommend we do, and that's exactly what staff is doing, it's entirely consistent with everything we've talked about with the Senator, and with Jared Mead on the other aspect of it, so that's why I'm equally perplexed what you're arguing with us about. I think there's consensus on the scope, and it encompasses everything, both boards have said they want the city to consider and design for this site.
They said, I was, I was hoping to finish my comments and to have clarification, and you interrupted me, so, let me try and finish my thoughts, please don't interrupt me, okay? Um, it, it was a sign, it was a unique situation where the A and B Board met with the Senator and Chuck Wright, and went over a number of meetings to cre- create these uh specific additions to the Monument Park, um, and then, we, we, he got the money, he got the two hundred and fifty thousand, okay, he took those, you know, city put together the proposal for the grant, he took it in, and, and he really helped to, you know, make this thing happen for us, we wouldn't have that two hundred and fifty grand, that's also the reason, in, in hindsight, what we did wrong was, we never, nobody ever came here to the council and asked for permission to go after this grant, and that's why you're all surprised by it, and, you know, what about these design elements, that, you know, so, it, it was, it's a project I think we can learn from going forward on how to do this better, I, 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 I think that's, that's the part that's causing us some urgency here, and then that two hundred and fifty thousand, is that, is that money for the city of Mill Creek, is that money for the Monument Park? And I think what we're, we're, we're saying here is, that's really money for the city of Mill Creek, and if we use it for helping to offset the water drainage, then we're gonna use it for the water drainage, and, and, you know, I understand that, I just wanna make sure that we have enough enhancements to the Monument Park to truly justify that grant that we were given by the state for the Memorial Park, the Veterans Park, and I, 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 that's why we're having these arguments and discussions and, you know, frustration, so that, that, I think that nothing more needs to be said on it, um.
Do you want a formal motion to approve the scope with the additional items, or?
Yeah, we're in a, we're in a study session.
Not sure we're precluded from doing that?
I think you, the motion is in order at any time, from my recollection of your, your council motion.
Yeah, unless the city attorney tells us otherwise, do you want a formal motion, or do you have a consensus, I think there's cons- I think there's consensus.
Yeah.
Well, what, what would it, I mean, what would it take to provide an assessment of, is there an option for adding parking that would not interfere with the other fundamental project points that we've, I think, reached consensus on?
So, so Dan will cringe when I say this, and he can shoot me later, I think the proposal is because this street right here, right now, there is parallel parking around the street, there's four, five, or six spots here, if you said, we're gonna spend a bunch of money and blast out this berm, and maybe water is coming this direction through this area, so think about that, but if you could blast this out and not have a lot of issues, maybe you could put in some diagonal slots here, four, five, six slots, more than what's there now.
Well, if we have to-
Those cost in order, what, fifteen, twenty thousand bucks each?
If we have to spend the money by next year, and we don't have funding identified for how we would do that, I'm not sure how-
Yeah, and I think that would, I don't think that would fit within the six hundred we've got.
So, would it be better to phrase it, that loo- look at any option within our budget, is there any option within our budget for expanding parking? Not stud, just, I think the conceptual, i- is, is it even a concept, or are you gonna come back and say, there's no way we could add parking without interfering with the other priorities that I think we all have consensus on?
Yeah.
For the parking and monument.
With your, with your uh permission, Dan, if, the one reason to consider this now would be if it had some impact on the design, which may include, as much as we, uh, here, everybody, we're not anxious really to drain this area here by the amphitheater for the sake of having a dry amphitheater, but that water that comes out of here might go this way and go that way, right now, there's drain pipes through this whole thing-
Right.
-that are also probably clogged, and so if you said, hooray, we got this fixed, hooray, we got this fixed, and we'll find out three years later, this, this water is not coming through here, you're gonna be sorry, so I think this drainage project might be over here, once we look at it.
I would be hesitant to say we're going to be doing any repair of the drainage system within a well-
With a buffer, and then, yeah, then you're under the rules, you're not allowed to do that, you're not supposed to be draining it, and, right now, there are pipes here that, again, back in twenty ten, they did what they did.
Right, but I think what they're saying is, there's no way to do it within that buffer that would create additional dry space to add more parking.
But, the, the green area.
The green area, yeah, but if that-
The line of blood, and that's what I'm saying, I'm not-
Sorry, I'm not on the, I, I did what I don't like, um, I am not saying that we should be putting parking there, I'm just saying, if this, if there's an opportunity to look at concepts, or to look at ideas, as we're doing for all the other things, I think it would be great to include it, I respect and understand, if I, you know, this is not feasible cuz there's these other things, when it comes time to it, and then that needs to be some, if other people agree, then that's another push for another grant about how to fix, that, I get all of that, but, I'm just asking for, in the additional scope, if we can still, cuz that is a concern that the library has had.
City engineer, go ahead.
Um, in a past life, I designed hundreds of parking lots.
Yes, I remember us talking about this.
So, uh, I do have a bit of experience in this area, um, I'm going to say that it's very unlikely we'll be able to find more parking, however, how about we separate the parking question from this overall one, and I can instruct staff to take some time and look at options from an engineering side, and have them see if there's any options for providing additional parking, either in the park area or along one fifty-six.
Does anyone, does anyone have any opposition to that?
I'm, I'm thinking there might be, if we roll the dice, there, there's a possibility, our staff back then, when we instructed them in two thousand and seven to find every possible parking space, that's when this parking lot down here in the south happened, if they did their work back then, we might find that work, or I might call Scott Smith and say, do you remember, and he may say, this, we couldn't because of something or other, or maybe they just didn't look at it, so we might also have some of this data if we dig a little bit, so I'm with Dan, I think we could look at that separately, do that quickly, so we don't, I don't wanna confuse the designer with parking or not.
Yep.
Fantastic, I, I respect that, and if, if that is an opportunity, that would be great.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Cuz that is a good question, I think the library's always asking, I've always said, no more, two thousand and seven, they did everything they could, but let's prove that that was the case, or not the case, and find out that it's impossible, or it's a three hundred thousand dollar project, then you could think about how to find funding for that.
I also think it would, sorry, I, I think it would be helpful when we're talking about any discussions ever about relocation of, of the library, or whatever, not saying that that would happen, that that's something to consider, if we know that this is the amount and the design of parking that's available, ever, for this space, do you know what I mean, to have that confirmation, so if there is any ever conversation in the next fifteen years, that, um, that's a, a data point we have, so thank you.
Um, yeah, I just wanna add that if, if you guys can do this without it taking too much time, um, that I am very excited to find out if we could figure out more parking, because not only when we go to the library do we have a hard time finding parking, but also when we are having our events at the memorial, it's hard to find parking, so, um, parking, look, taking a glance at it, if it's something that you can do that's not gonna pull you from something, George, I am a bigger, okay, thank you.
I think we have consensus on our plan of action, you have your primary bullet points with the additional items that are gonna be looked at, to the extent they could be incorporated, and then separately, you're gonna look at, is there any option to bring in forward a proposal to expand parking, separate from the scope?
Yeah. Thank you, I think this, this does it for us, and you're gonna see us come back-
John, you were about to say something?
I was just gonna say, a point of clarification for Director Todd, you mentioned seven uh flagpoles, uh, just to keep it clear, it was only two additional flagpoles, just wanna make sure that was clear.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just two.
I was counting five Armed Services Branches, State Flag, City, there's eight flags.
There's now, there's now six Armed Services, by the way.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we were just a- adding two, uh, one for the state and one for the city, that's all.
Oh, okay, I thought we heard somewhere that Armed Services Branches' flags.
Hmm, not part of the, not part of the proposal, but it's not a-
Okay.
Yeah, that wasn't what we submitted, or, it was just, it came up after the fact.
Yeah, so it was part of that group.
I just wanted you to know what- Strike that, three, three flagpoles is more reasonable, right?
Yeah, that's-
You can fly three flags, you cannot fly-
Yeah.
That, that, too many flags on a flagpole.
Yeah, we just wanted to clarify.
Look at.
Yeah, clarify that, yeah, that was not a request for seven.
So, we'll-
Not, there's an idea, not to say it was a bad idea, just an idea after the fact, okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we've done this one service.
Thank you, appreciate your help, council.
Okay, uh, brings us to our consent agenda, item I, resolution-related design review board bylaws, which I believe we previously reviewed, item J, approvals of, approval of checks number six eight nine nine three through six nine zero three five, and ACH wire transfers in the amount of five hundred and one thousand, four hundred and four dollars and seventy-six cents, audit committee was Mayor Protem Vignal and Councilmember Allison, were there any exceptions?
No exceptions.
In harmony, and item K, payroll and benefit ACH payments in the amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents, any exceptions? Any exceptions?
No exceptions.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Alls in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Consent agenda is approved six, zero. Report, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, this is time for quarterly meetings, uh, that I've been attending in the past few weeks. And so. Um, had an opportunity to meet with Everett Public Schools, uh, Superintendent Salzman and, um. Update him just kind of how things are going across Mill Creek. And so, um. A lot of things on the bond side, uh, in terms of city of, uh, Everett Public Schools, but, uh, those things will be. Probably showing up sometime in September, October. Staffing update, uh, we're fully staffed now. Wanted to, uh, welcome Joseph Odom, who's lateral that's coming into our PD now. And so we're happy to have him. Uh, Lisa Topete is a, a new customer service representative in our passport office. So good to have that addition. And apologize, I re, don't recall the names of the, uh, two brothers that are, uh, are, um. Temporary maintenance workers for the summer, but we have two that started recently as well. Few more items, wanted to, um, ask council if we could, uh, put forward a motion to cancel the August. Uh, council meetings, all but the one, of course.
So which would be the one that we're not canceling?
Uh, the twelfth, I believe. Is that correct? Or the, the second week.
That's based on the polling of council of who's going to be available?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, so I don't have my calendar up. So the, the meeting would be on the twelfth, so that means we'd be canceling the fifth. The nineteenth.
The twenty second.
Twenty six. Uh, yeah, first second, yeah. So we meet the fifth, twelfth and twenty sixth. So we'd be canceling. The fifth and twenty sixth, correct?
Correct.
Okay, can we have a motion? Is there, we have a motion to, uh, a motion to that effect? Motion would be to cancel the regular meetings on August fifth and August twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passed five zeros. Councilmember Cavallari had stepped to the men's room. Okay?
Uh, next item is, um. Still talking about agenda, uh, a possible special meeting at the end of July. Uh, in recent agenda discussions, we pushed some things off to September, thinking that maybe we would not need. Um, another meeting. So rather than something in August, uh, which was really geared towards. Uh, Gigi Lo's timeline, um, for other purposes, uh, specifically, one is the financial policy that we want to bring forward. Um, that in itself is pretty important, we think, to at least, uh, bring forward to council before we start talking about revenue. Uh, revenue options and taxing, uh, special taxing districts. So. Um, we wanted to hold a special meeting, which would have a number of items and maybe some. Opportunities for us to approve contracts too before the month of, of August, um. Uh, we, we don't plan on filling that up, uh. You know, for a long discussion.
Have we already pulled counsel on availability?
Uh, as far as we are, we understand that all, all the council members will be present.
Are you talking about the twenty ninth of July? I wasn't pulled on that. First two weeks for me, I can't either.
First two weeks, no, we're talking July.
Yeah, I wasn't pulled on that.
Uh, the twenty.
Twenty ninth?
We have five Tuesdays. Are you available?
I'm not. I have to check my work schedule. I don't know.
Hold, we can take that up.
Reach back out to the council.
Okay. To be determined.
And I, I beg your pardon if I wasn't, I've just now totally forgotten it. I don't recall any contact.
That's fine. Okay.
Yeah, and we need to have all seven of us there because we're, the intent was to have the discussion on the financial, financial policies. So we need to have full attendance. Okay?
Uh, and upcoming, upcoming meetings in the following week, um, let's see, we. Regional collaboration meeting coming up, uh, next week with, uh, five other cities. Mountain Lake Terrace, what's next, next to Mountain Lake Terrace? Briar, Briar, thanks. Edmonds.
Luckle deal.
Luckle fields, well. And Lindwood. So, uh, we're going to be hosting that meeting here at City Hall. Uh, it's an opportunity for us, Deputy City Manager and myself will be reviewing a draft, uh, sent by Mayor Rosen. Uh, that will have some ideas on it where there may be possible opportunities for collaboration across cities. Um, so, um, Mayor Pro Tem will be attending that meeting, uh, I believe as well. Uh, another meeting coming up, or not a meeting, but, uh, just recently Senator Lovick had reached out to us regarding. Him wanting to bring, uh, Senator Jamie Peterson, uh, to Mill Creek City Hall, uh, in two days, on Thursday. So I've not pretty short fifteen minute, um. Um, tour of the city and meeting staff and, uh, I believe Mayor Pro Tem and I believe Mayor, you will be attending as well.
Yes.
And so I just wanted to, uh, update council on that, so. And those are all of my reports, mayor, and I will forward it to our deputy city manager who will update on. Everett Public School Resource Officer Interlocal Agreement.
All right, so we were looking to bring forward the annual SRO ILA, um, on consent at our next meeting. Um, so normally we would bring that up in reports. Um, so far, everything, this is going to be just your standard, um, agreement with the school. We do have the increase for expected salaries and benefit costs, that kind of thing. Um, and then we do have some really minimal edits in the ILA. But it's just related to RCWs, uh, they just clarify. Where maybe something was in an engrossed substitute house bill. And now they say it's RCW, this, this, this.
Will that be able to be circulated prior to Friday? So everyone can have a little more opportunity to review it and provide some input? If there's, for some reason, we need to pull that from the calendar?
Yeah.
Because we haven't seen it yet. So the sooner you can get that out, if we have it, the better.
Yeah, and, uh, I believe the police chief does have an agenda and you'll have the copy of the ILA that would go with the next agenda as well. But we'll see if we can get that out here in the next day or so.
Okay, thank you.
And the last update from staff will be, uh, our communications and marketing manager updating on events.
Good evening. Uh, I wanted to just give you a quick update on, um, our pianos on main concert, which was just on June thirtieth. Um, this was a really fun event. Uh, we added a new, a second pianist and a poet. We had about seventy-five in attendance and, which sounds small, but it is a growing, uh, event. And just, there's just something about hearing kind of jazz fusion. And poetry outside on a beautiful sunny day that it just felt so Mill Creek. I mean, I don't know, it was just a really nice, really nice night. Really fun. Uh, both of the pianists have said that they would be willing to come back next year and maybe even bring some friends. So we're, we'll, more on that when it comes. But huge thank you to our public works crew. It's no pun intended, um, hu- huge heavy lift for, for them that day. Because they're hauling all the pianos out and then they go back after the concert and move the piano again. To, um, put it undercover. So, uh, but the jewelry source. And a huge thank you to the jewelry source for allowing us to do that and Pianos Properties to allow us to do that on the, um, plaza out there. But it was a really fun event. So hopefully next year we can get some of you guys out there. Um, I also want to remind everybody that we'll be, the city will be out in force at the Mill Creek Festival this weekend. So come see us. And then also at the VIP event, I know that the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem will be there. Hopefully others will be there too. And, uh, mayor's going to say a few words. So hope to see you all out there. I believe you are.
Thanks for letting me know.
And then, uh, I want, since I just have a couple, have you for a couple of minutes, I wanted to give you an update on a few of our new rent classes that we're bringing in. So we, uh, did a park survey, uh, a while ago. And some of the things that came out of the survey, we, there were requests or about for different types of classes. And it, and with the facilities that we have being so small, and, um, not having a kitchen and anything like that. Uh, we don't really have, uh, we've had a difficulty bringing in new types of classes that would be interesting. But one that I have wanted for quite a while now, I'm super excited to tell you about is called AI Clarity. And there, it's called demystifying artificial intelligence for the everyday professional. So it's going to be a three week class that's going to be in the evenings beginning, um, July thirty first. And then it's August seventh and the fourteenth from six to seven PM. And this instructor is going to go through, this is the description, I'll just say it really quick. Um, it says, this practical no jargon class is designed for everyday professionals. Who want to understand what AI is, how it works, and how to use it with confidence. No tech background required. In just three sessions, you'll explore generative AI tools and AI agents. Learn how to use them effectively and ethically. And discover how they can support your work and daily life. The course includes three in-person classes. And access to a private Facebook group for ongoing support and resources. And then this instructor is, this is just like an introductory course, but we're hoping to bring this back throughout or in the fall again. And do, um, kind of an expanded course. So I'm excited to give that a try. It's with Dr. Corey Wilder. And I know her well. Um, she was actually one of my instructors at, um, at, uh, WSU in Everett. And so I'm excited to, uh, have the opportunity to see her teach as well. So if you want more information, we will have that up soon on the website for new classes. We're also bringing a kids yoga and meditation class on Sundays. So we're excited about that one. Um, this is a, uh, Mill Creek instructor. She is taught at, through YMCA, um, here in Washington and in California. And, um, she's really excited about yoga, especially yoga for kids. So we're excited to, um, see her bring this collaboration. She said it's a fun and engaging yoga and mindfulness class designed to inspire children to embody gratitude, compassion and kindness. Through playful movement, uplifting music and calming relaxation breath work, kids will explore these core values while building strength and balance and focus. Um, so it's, we're excited about this one too, um, new instructor. And then finally, one that we've had a lot of requests for, which is a cooking class. Can't really do cooking classes here, but we are going to do a cookie decorating class. And this instructor is, these cookies, I'm going to send these pictures around because they are stunning. Going to do. Multiple holiday decorating, cookie decorating classes. Two of them are going to be kid parent classes. So for the one price, a, a parent and a kid or an adult and a child can come and take the class together. So we're really excited about these. The instructor's super professional. She does beautiful work, as you can see. Um, her name is, uh, Lynn Baker, which I think is awesome. And she's part of the Sprinkle Sisters, uh, group. And so we're going to have more about her and her classes on our website too. All of these will be coming out. Her, she'll be doing all of her classes throughout the fall and winter months. And so hopefully that's just a way to add a little bit of cooking, but not exactly cooking. So we're excited about that. Um, and then, like I said, all of these will be, will be on the website soon. So, and then our, while, while we're out, you guys will know that, um, August, so National Night Out is August fifth. So don't forget to put that on your calendar. Any questions?
Councilor Stekler?
Great job on everything. I just love the summer here and the activities are, you're right, that brings our community together and that makes us a stronger city. So kudos to you on all of these. Um, I, I like everything. I was going to make a, a suggestion only. That I heard, uh, some, a, a number of people have come to me, more than three, so I call that many. Uh, but, uh, one representing a group, um. Like the fact that we have one memorial veteran type parade a year, that's good. Um, have we ever thought about doing, guess we are a small city, uh, a Fourth of July parade that is very local yokel oriented? Because I, there was, that's what came when so many of them were, you know, lo- recently publicized and talked about in the papers and things like that. I don't know, have you ever thought about doing one or it could, could be a thought, uh?
Let's make that a topic for proposed new initiative for another.
Be being able to, to add any more. So parades are an all-staff, all-city, all-hands-on-deck type of event. Because they require so much from our public works crew and so much from our police department. It's a huge thing. So it, it's, it's a heavy lift for everybody for a year in advance of the event. We start, well, we've been working on it for a while, but for our Veterans Day, we start doing our planning in July. And it's, and that's like weekly planning, not just, um, you know.
This is a discussion for another, we don't need.
A lot of people, you know, yes, we've heard that request, but that would have to come from on high.
I understood.
You guys. Okay, make that decision. So, but thank you. Anyway, any other questions?
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Any other reports?
One last report, mayor. Um, this morning I started, re-engaged my meetings, monthly meetings with Representative Berg. So it was a good discussion, uh, which reminded me that, uh, I, Deputy City Manager in the Legislative Committee. Probably know you start discussions on things that are coming up or needed by the city. Uh, I gave her a lot of ideas about our cost structure and, and things over the next few years. And she was very receptive to. My concerns. And so I will discuss those with the Legislative, Legislative Committee in the coming weeks or. Maybe in September when we do start those discussions and, and then we could, uh. Figure out how we could be very deliberate this year in, in our asks. So. Those are the end of my reports, mayor. Uh, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, can we have a motion to extend the meeting to eight thirty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Halls in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is approved unanimously. Uh, in the interest of time, my family's been waiting for me for forty-five minutes to celebrate my son's twenty-fourth anniversary. So I'm going to skip my report this evening. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I think I can actually put off what I was going to talk about.
I was, no, no pressure, I was just.
Nope, I'm good.
Councilmember Cavallari?
I'm going to actually speak, mayor. Thank you. Um, just a couple of things. As we celebrated our two hundred and forty-ninth year of independence from tyranny. It looks as if at least two hundred and twenty or more have lost their lives. And are missing in Texas, more, more than really any of our hearts can bear to really understand. So I just want our hearts and prayers to go out to the folks in Texas and all the affected. Families and the first responders doing their best, uh, in recovery efforts at this point. And on a more personal note. Man by the name, I'm not sure if you knew him or not, he's the founder and CEO of Place for Hope. A man by the name of Dr. Greg Jantsch. Who is a, uh, not only a friend of mine, but an absolutely fantastic man. His holistic approach to mental health of mind, body and soul. Uh, made him an innovator in the field. He passed away over the weekend of a tragic accident at his home. And, um. Probably one of the more generous and most gracious individuals, um, to walk the earth and he'll be sorely missed. He should have some, um, we should have a remembrance of life, I believe it's early, but August second of any that may have known him. Or dealt with him or his organizations, or even read one of his forty-five bestselling books. Uh, that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Councilor Stekler?
Uh, in the interest of brevity, um, I saw the letter we all saw about South County Fire. And the, uh, potential loss of EMS and, and EMS vehicles. Could we, uh, have that brought up at maybe our next meeting to give us an update on that? Is this truly a reality? Or just not even something to be concerned about? This is the first I heard about it.
Thank you for that reminder. I forgot to bring that up. That's a good point. We will get it. It'd be good to get a briefing on that in two weeks. Is that, is that all, John?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Councilor Allison?
No report.
Councilor Duquesne?
No report.
Audience communication. Tannis, does anyone like to address the council? Barb, is that a yes? Would you like to address the council? Nope. Okay, we may not have needed the extension. So we have nothing on our agenda for an executive session. And with nothing further on our agenda, I'll adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-nine PM. Thank you. Yeah, I hope that's not.